In your big auditorium for us, it's the big stage. And so we've had audiences up to three hundred and fifty people a night. So. Where else would we go? Where else would we go? So thank you very much for asking us to be present with you tonight.
Just on a quick note, some of you might not know, our program is from the ages seven to fifteen. This is our fifteenth anniversary. Some of our first performers were Scott Cooper's daughters. And Cheyenne also told us that in the early years when we did Honk, which was ten years ago, Heard Girls were involved with that one also. So also with our program, we are only three and a half weeks that we've put all this together. So the kids are learning choreography, they're learning music, they're learning how to act, make costumes, some of them actually help us with that and with props. And one of our music directors, because we are music theater camp, she said technically, Kim, you guys do it in fifteen mornings. And then she said, no, you take out Fourth of July, that's fourteen mornings. So that's what these kids are doing. So we have forty kids that are involved. We tried fifty, too many cats tried to hurt. So. We keep it at forty. We advertised on April first this year, closed on April third with a waiting list of eleven. That's how much of a need that there is for this, because sports technically isn't for everybody. And these kids have so much fun. We have a wonderful marriage with the high school drama department. It started with Anita Hoffman. After she got tired of trying to help us with the stage downtown, she said, let's see if we can't get you into the high school auditorium. So when our kids do this, and then they age out and they move on, which Katie actually has a degree in college with theater arts, by the way. Then they move into Nathaniel's program. Like Shakespeare in the Park. And when he had an intermission, the kids come out and introduce themselves. I was even amazed how many of those actors and performers were our kids that started out when they were seven years old and they had graduated up. So not only are our kids actors moving in, they're also learning technology, how to do the sound, the tech. Everything on that stage. And so when these kids get to the middle school and high school, in fact, when you're at the middle school, there wasn't a department and some of our kids said. We want drama here and they got a drama unit going there at the middle school, which is kind of funny, actually. And they're able to move in and feel like they are at home with the high school. And it's a safe place for so many of our kids. So we are truly grateful to the Cook County School District. For letting us be a part of what you guys are. In the whole big scheme of things, our performances, every year it costs now about twenty thousand dollars to put on. And so we do a lot of grant writing with Ms. Barbara. She's our grant writer. Fundraisers, they're sure we got to help with Shakespeare in the Park. You'll be seeing us if you want to make a pumpkin, we're getting ready for that one. So be sure to look us up. And the kids are, you know, they try to solicit from their family members too. We try to keep this at a phenomenal tiny fee for our kids, sixty dollars through Park and Rec. So we work with Park and Rec and we work with the Cook County Foundation. I have a feeling that we've been here fifteen years. We're going to be here at least another fifteen years. And why? Because we have our kids that are moving up through the ranks because of our high school department. So you guys too can be very proud and Cook County of what the department is, because we are starting to get well known. Another that Cook, our COCC. Is sending people over because they had theater this year. Over in Madras to see how we do it in three and a half weeks, because they can't believe we put on such a performance. So we can't either. So here we are. So thank you again for letting us be such a huge part of you.
And while they're coming through to shake some hands, we're going to get our next group. Next step, we'll have the high school recognition. So Jake will introduce.
Good evening. I'm Jacob, the principal of the high schools. Tonight I have with me our FFA advisors, Dan McNary and Caitlin Tweedy. They recently competed at the state fair and had several students do really, really well. So they're going to tell you all about that. So let's introduce them. Give them a hand real quick.
Well, thank you for inviting us. Again, my name's Dan McNary and I am one of the Kirk County Ag teachers and FFA advisors. We have the opportunity to work with a large number of students at the high school each year. All of our ag students. Are FFA members. How they choose to utilize FFA in their programming is completely up to them. We have a large number of students that are very active throughout the year and the different activities. Most of our FFA members that we would consider to be active participate in county fair. And we had twenty eight students at the county fair this year wearing the blue corduroy jacket. And state fair in Oregon happens at a really inopportune time when it comes to the start of school. And because of that, we always have, we see a pretty drastic decrease in the amount of students that show at county fair and then end up going to state fair. It's the week prior to in-service, it actually ends up. Carrying a little bit over into the in-service week, we end up having. Just a handful of students, normally ten to twelve that will go. This year we only had six. And those six students probably had more success than what we've had as a chapter in several years. Of the six, we had two incoming sophomores. We had two incoming seniors and we had two graduates participate who had just recently graduated this spring. They competed in equestrian activities, the swine show, the sheep show, the poultry show, livestock judging, tractor driving. And all of them had some success and we'd like to share that with you tonight.
And as Dan introduced myself, I'm Caitlin Twee, recent hire for the ag department at Kirk County High School. So I may be very non-familiar to all of you, but it's nice to be here. So the first thing at the state fair that we kind of attended to ran Thursday, Friday and Saturday mornings, which was the horse show. And we had two, a graduated senior and then a incoming junior. Who showed their horses and both did super well in the advanced divisions. They both competed in English pleasure as well as English equitation. With Tavia Quinn earning fourth place in English pleasure and Tavia Quinn earning second place in English equitation. Which earned her the title of reserve high point English rider. And then the following day, they competed in Western pleasure and Western equitation with Tavia Quinn placing fourth in pleasure and third in equitation. And then the third day was kind of a combination of a bunch of different events. And in the barrel racing event, Grace Budry was able to earn second place in the advanced division. And then. In the key race competition, Tavia Quinn earned fifth. Then they both competed in individual flags and Grace Budry earned fifth while Tavia earned third. In the polls competition, Grace Budry earned first while Tavia Quinn earned second. And then finally in figure eight, Tavia Quinn earned first and Grace Budry earned fourth. Which led to Tavia Quinn earning the title of reserve high point division two gaming rider. As well as the title of overall high point division two horse exhibitor. And she worked hard for that. She was a graduating senior and we are really proud of her. Then we focused on the swine show, which were also over the course of those three days and showmanship, I believe, was the first day. Thursday where Madison Fall competed and earned seventh place overall advanced showman. And then she competed in the breeding female show as well. Earning the title of reserve supreme champion breeding goat, which she was very proud of. And in the sheep division, we only had one student who brought his sheep. And he was able to earn second place in that market lamb class. That was Justin Mitchell.
This is my eighteenth year teaching here and in my first sixteen years here. I did not have a single member show any poultry at all at any level. Kirk County is now a force to be reckoned with in the poultry division at the state fair. Thanks to the help of three wonderful ladies that competed, two of them competed last year and then we added a third one this year. Madison Fall had the champion and reserve champion turkeys at the state fair. Piper Hallam had the, was the champion poultry showman. She had the best of show poultry exhibit. She was the champion other breeds chicken, the reserve champion other breeds chicken, the champion bantam breeds chicken. Tavia Quinn was reserve champion poultry showman, reserve best of show poultry exhibit and the reserve champion bantam breeds chicken. They, as a group, earned the first place poultry herdsmanship at the state fair. So champions in that area. We did qualify earlier last spring. One student at our district tractor driving contest to compete at state. Wyatt Gamble, he was a freshman competing in the advanced contest last spring. Earning second place overall, which earned him one of three of our district spots to compete at state. He ended up placing first in the parts identification test. He was second place in the pallet loading portion of the event, seventh place implement hookup. And ended up ninth place overall. So he did a wonderful job of representing us as a singleton. And then in our state livestock judging contest, which was held on the Monday before we came home. Madison Fall, a graduate of our program, a graduate of the district. She actually has signed and is now going to be leaving next week to start her collegiate judging career at Lynn Benton Community College. She was sixth overall in beef cattle and ninth high individual overall in a contest of about a hundred and twenty students. So. So she did really well. It was a very good showing by the six members of the Cook County FFA chapter in Salem. We wanted to share that with you.
Okay, so our IT just inserted that we're back up and running. Apparently there's some outage and bends, but we are good to go now. So. Thank you for all of those recognitions. Greatly appreciate those. Those were nice to hear about. One point four agenda additions, deletions, revisions and approval. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda or the agenda and we have a second discussion. All in favor of approving, say aye and raise your hand. All of those. Superintendent update, three point one. We're not turning the page. The consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Now I'm going to turn the page.
Good evening. All right, I'm here tonight to talk about an institution ID for Grizzly Mountain Home Link. If we rewind about four years when Grizzly first started, it started as a district program. It started as a need that we were facing at that point in time. To help serve the community. It was a time where we were starting remote during the pandemic. So it started then. And over the course of time, Grizzlies continue to grow, it's continued to evolve. And at this point in time, Grizzly is sitting just over about two hundred students. And what we're looking to do with Grizzly at this point in time is take it from a district program, which is how it started four years ago. And give it an institution ID, which actually makes it an official school with the state of Oregon. So that's what it does now. Any student currently enrolled in Grizzly, when you talk about attendance or grades or. The state test scores goes back to the resident school at this point in time. So giving an institution ID to Grizzly Mountain will actually give Grizzly an opportunity to track its own attendance. Its own state test scores and so forth through the state to have an institution ID. So the proposal in front of you is to apply to the state of Oregon to make Grizzly an official school through the ODE.
There will be a like K through eight, K through twelve.
Right now, we're looking at doing a K eight with it and having the high school still back. And the reason for that is just the amount of high schoolers present currently in as we continue to build up that program.
Why the Grizzly Mountain kids that are currently high schoolers going through CCOO or have we given?
They're back through the high school right now. So they go back to Kirk County High.
So we don't offer nine through twelve this year.
We are offering it through a homeschool, through the same program. They just wouldn't be part of that institution ID right now. So they would continue to report back to the high school, looking at the K eight at this point, because the only measurement right now. Being that junior, but that is something if the board chose to say, hey, we want to make this K twelve, we could also do that because we don't submit the application until coming here before you. To have the discussion. So no application's been given to the state at this point in time.
Were you able to pull out any data and look at how that school might perform if it was reported out separately?
For which one? So we can start to pull some of those right now. And I would look to Dr. Hoff to see what numbers have been pulled at this point in time to that.
They use a, that's called the mats, fall, winter, spring, science, math and English. So we're able to pull that. This will just help. This really is just a behind the scenes kind of technical thing where now Grizzly Mountain will have their own report card. And get their own report. So in a sense, it really adds transparency and accountability to the public where we're internally able to see those numbers already.
But do we know, are we creating a high performing district, a high performing reporting unit, low performing, about the same as everybody else?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I would say it follows the spectrum where we have some, some students really thriving in Grizzly Mountain. We have some students that we're having to really ride for attendance to make sure they're logging in, doing, doing their coursework. So I'd say it's about, it fills the spectrum. With what we've seen comparable to our other schools.
I just said.
What I was, what I was waiting for the discussion.
Well, the high school, I mean, we have Pioneer. And Jake has programs with the high school. We have.
There are eight seniors right now as we continue to build that program. So there would only be eight reporting back as graduation or any number at this point in time as it continues to grow. There's thirteen juniors. Currently in, and then there are more about the twenty five or so freshmen sophomore. So right now, most of the numbers are sitting below where the state does the testing and not where the state would report the graduation either. So as of right now, there's not a lot of metric other than attendance that we would get from the nine, twelve institution ID presently.
The numbers are so small, the data would be so vast anyway, right?
Yes. Correct.
The high school part, the high school.
So, so my motion is to apply for the ID for a K eight.
But then what do you do with the nine through twelve? Does that?
Just like.
Are they utilizing a Grizzly Mountain only that they can't utilize at CCOO?
So Grizzly Mountain uses a different learning management system traditionally than CCOO did at that point. So I believe they used a cellist, they're moving and working with ingenuity right now where Fuel Ed is the learning management system that CCOO uses.
My concern is you make it a K through eight and then we have those whole classes that come from the high school over to Grizzly Mountain here and there. And then you do have a. A plethora of kids that you could get feed up from.
Can you always add?
So it could start as a K eight now. And a year or two when that, the larger numbers of the freshmen and sophomore roll up, you could come back and agree at the high school part of it.
So we have a motion on the table to. Yes, to make it a K through eight currently. Do you still second that motion?
Yeah, I second. I want more clarification. I've heard some talk that a lot of kids. I guess they, I, I think there's some issues with, like, they just have a lot of high school programs out. Are we looking at tightening those? Down between the four different options that we offer without Grizzly Mountain. It's four without Grizzly Mountain, right? Because we have the Pioneer. Kirk County High School, the COO. So it is to see. Would I say there's four, there's Pioneer. The brick and mortar, the CO, maybe there's three without. And, oh, and then Jake has a program he talked about. The work program.
COIC is part of Pioneer, essentially.
It's a part of Pioneer, okay. Yeah, are we looking at? Because I, I think there's been some scuttle with just moving kids. Like if there's behavior issues at one of the other schools and they just like get moved in. To Grizzly Mountain. So are we looking at tightening up the programs that we currently offer without Grizzly Mountain?
Yeah, I think we're always looking to refine every system. There's conversations right now in Grizzly too of how do we help make sure students are receiving the support they need? To make sure that they continue to grow K through twelve in that and finding ways to work with the families if they aren't performing. At that point to sit down and offer supports, offer intervention with it, but then also offer some other opportunities if there's a, another program that may work better. For a student at that point, just like if at the high school Pioneer might work better for a while or COIC through Pioneer might work better. Grizzly might work better, but finding that path for each student, that might be the best path. So working on that, adding the counseling support will help with that that we've done over there too, where the counselor will be able to sit down and work. over there too, where the counselor will be able to sit down and work with the kids individually and help steer them to what'll help get them across the stage.
Do we supply the teachers for kids with twelve at Grizzly Mountain? Do they have teachers dedicated just to high school learners?
We have secondary teachers that do six through twelve.
So this doesn't change any programs that we have. We're just trying to make it to where we can actually start posting information.
Correct.
Our program will continue to exist as they currently are. Doesn't do anything other than being able to log numbers.
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to approve the district to apply for a identification for Grizzly Mountain Home Link. K through eight. We have a second on the table. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Say I.
Alright.
I, all opposed? Thank you. Yes, thank you. Alright, three point two, May bond schedule. So in our special board meeting, there was some conversation about potentially November bond at that, at that board meeting. You asked us to bring back a potential May because November was not quite the time, um, and in that discussion. So tonight we are bringing that information to you and so some potential, uh, discussion points that we can talk about tonight, returning with the May bond timeline. Looking at a bond slash long facilities committee selection process, um, within that board member representation, we can also talk a little bit about polling, whether we want early polling, which would be a general, um, kind of broad, um, statements within that poll, um, versus, um, a later one that be more specific for both. Um, once we have a potential bond package, if so, um, choosing to move forward. And then potential action vote to approve board members to that committee and then vote to move forward the bond, um, timeline. Uh, so those are some talking points for tonight. And then the second slide. I'm gonna have Anna kind of go through that with you a little bit, and then we'll come back to the actual draft of the timeline. Or it might be good to just clarify, um, who knows what as far as preparing for a bond. So I put together kind of a grid of to show, you know, what does the board need to do versus what does the staff need? I mean, Melissa, Joel, what do we need to do? Um, so the first thing is to, to point out that the board needs to decide if we want to do a bond measure in room. We as staff try to provide information and guidance if, if needed, um, but really it's the board's decision. This is not in your packet. Um, once the board makes that decision, then we would, we as staff would develop a timeline, which is in your packet. Um, and the board, the board gets to decide to like that timeline or not. Um, and then the district would devote staff time and resources to working on a bond measure. Um, the board gets to decide whether you want a committee, and this is where public input comes in. You get to decide how you want public input, whether you want a committee, what does that committee look like, who's it made up of? What is it called? And then we coordinate that for you. So Tammy would be setting meetings and, you know, getting snacks and getting a conference room and communicating with the public. Um, so all of those few things there about decide whether to appoint a committee, decide who, how to invite or appoint a committee, decide who is on the committee, decide when the committee meets and how they meet. Whether it's room or in person or every week or every month or whatever works for you so that you feel like you have the opportunity to get as much public input as possible. Um, then as you kind of go through, you get to decide if you want to do a poll of the community, you know, call people up and ask them if this case is for bond. Um, if you decide to do that, then the district will handle the bidding process and the vendor coordination and, um, et cetera. And individual staff can set, sit on those, on that committee and help in any way the board decides. Um, the board decides if we'll hire a consultant or a PR firm. Again, the staff will do the work so that you don't have to do that piece of it. Um, you get to identify potential citizens for advocacy and we do not get to advocate, but we can help provide any information that will help with that advocacy. Um, and then I'll work with bond counsel, I'll work with underwriters, we'll do analyses and all that. And then your responsibility is to review those things, ask questions, understand it, be able to answer questions in the community, et cetera. And I'll do the best I can to present it in ways that you understand it and you can repeat. Um, and then the board gets to finalize the list of projects. And that's why you want to make sure that you have the public input so that you feel good about what projects are in the bond that you pass a resolution for. I'll work on getting the bond council to write the resolution based on your, um, preferences. Um, and then as we go through, there's bond advocacy, and then there's more things that happen, but I just kind of stopped there. Um, now the path, the, when we did the bond process last May, we skipped a lot of this. And it was because of the circumstances at the time. Normally we wouldn't skip those things. We don't have that same circumstance now, so we're in a point where we, we do have time, although if you look at the timeline that's in your packet. Keep in mind, this is a draft. Um, and it can be changed and, you know, added to and deleted from, et cetera. Um, these, this lit, okay, I just want to explain this, this list. Normally you would see like a timeline, you know, for a timeline in kind of a horizontal format, and you would see things like that. But the reason it's in a list like this is because it helps us to keep track of everything. This list that's here worked well for us the last time we did a big bond. And when I say it worked well, it helped us to meet the deadlines. And we've worked backwards from that. So when I said a minute ago that we have time before the May election, keep in mind that the last time we did a big bond, we had been working probably over a year before we got to the October point where we had long range facility committee meeting, the public input process happening. So I just want to make sure that you, that you know that. If you do want to go forward with the May bond, you'll have to kind of compress that, that public input to make sure that all that still happens prior to getting down to, you know, uh, finalize December first, kind of, kind of a little bit down about halfway down. It says finalized projects to be included in the measure. That's where you need all that public input to happen before then.
And then convince it.
Right. Yes.
Yeland, what is the likelihood of that with a long range maybe by December one? Because they would have.
Start right away, we could do it. We'd only have like five, four, five agents if that. We could do it three. As long as we had a good committee that was putting the committee together, it's gonna take a couple of weeks.
Right, that's. And you're not.
We only have about twenty people, so I think you open it up to everybody. And I only have like two board members and select number and different district staff who we choose. As you said, twenty people on the committees, twenty people actually is just about right, yeah, to be able to have a conversation.
But it's really the board's decision one. I want to kind of, you know, up to this point, every time we talk about bond, staff has really tried to provide guidance and now we're to the point where we're ready for you guys to, you've been through some of it, you've got more experience, and now it's really, we want to make sure that you all are one hundred percent comfortable with whatever is decided. There was a couple of questions about polling options. So, um, again, this is just a draft. So in October, if you'd rather have a broad polling that goes out just with generic questions, um, and then later have one that's more specific after the committee, you know, gather, just gonna start narrowing down the focus. Broad things could be, you know, would you support a CT building with trades? Would you just support a bond period? Would you support early shot, like just broad questions? And then once the committee meets and has more of a package, then you push out a polling option that's a little bit more specific. Once the committee, the committee has that input, brings that back to you. So there's a couple of different options on the polling, um, as well. And we replace it within the time.
Who's Piper Sandman?
I was gonna say, yeah, who's Piper Sandman?
His response, Piper Sandman.
That's our company that's the underwriter who helps us through the analysis or, um, what's it, what would the tax rate be if you wanted to do this? You know, bond issue, et cetera. And do the site is that, um,
you say the board decides on which company to go with? Or is this, this is different than?
Right, the board would, can you go back to that slide? The board would just, you can't, you can't decide whether they have an underwriter or not, and the underwriters already, we already have a contract with an underwriter. So they help us with all of our lead up to, to that. Um, and it's required to have an underwriter.
Are you talking more about the polling and the advertisement? A couple of big bonds that are passed. I think I've read it before, like Crestwell, the Crestwell School Bond. Crestwell's very, very similar to Cook County. Um, and I'd like to see who ran their bond. There's been a couple.
The larger one that passed in Albany was a Reagan.
Nope, I think that's different than what you're talking about. Like, so this is more of the advertisement that, you know, the. Yeah.
Polling, like, you remember.
Yeah. So what you need to do on that? Sorry, the math. Yeah, the math, the, they actually sell the bonds to the public, the underwriter does. Um, but if you wanted any kind of support, whether that's a, a polling company, a, um, PR company, any kind of, just a consultant, a bond consultant, et cetera. You would need to go through the public purchasing process to, to do that. So basically what you do is an RFP, you would then I mean, depending on if it's over a certain dollar amount, you, you would want to do an RFP, you'd want to specify how you're going to make your decision. And then you would get, uh, responses to the RFP and you have a few people review those RFPs and decide which firm to hire.
All of the current information that we have of other passing long range committees that we've had, is that information still valid? When does that become no longer valid? May, May is our last chance with the current assessment. Well, last chance for awesome, but you can still base data and update the prices. The plan, but you have to redo, you have to do, redo an assessment? If you want the awesome grant, yes, you would have to redo the assessment and the long range facilities plan. But you could start with your old plan as a base.
Yes.
And work off of that.
Do you think this is enough?
I'd rather see a start of community involvement and gather that information and take some time like you did on the last big one. It sounds like maybe that year buildup to this October timeline type scenario, I think. Just looking at how I mean, you're already saying this is condensed, and then we're gonna scrunch it down some more to hit some of these dates. And I think you're gonna miss community involvement who we, who we would need to pass along. I again, haven't done this before, but.
When we start the process and go through everything maybe look at going on in November.
I can remember, I can redo the timeline order.
Now it's their way. We look at one of the I don't, whoever that knew my research from Albany, is there a way?
That's your political consulting. I mean, my, my.
Is there a way to find the information out before we get to this? Okay.
The other way you could do this, which is not different from what I was describing. But I mean, my, my view is that you got, we talked to the board. And we talked about whether we should go out for November. That was a question we were asked. And everybody quickly agreed November was a stupid idea because there was absolutely no way we would be able to come to agreement by November. We looked at this really long list. We all agreed to May because that was like the next available date, not because we love May, because it wasn't November. Then we looked at this really long list of projects. And on this board of five people, we completely broke apart in terms of where we ought to put our priority for what we would run for a bond. And we kicked that can down the road, and that we'll talk about later. So we didn't get to agree on amongst the five of us who had established somewhat of a working relationship and somewhat of a common understanding what we needed. I don't know how you would pull the community in, get common agreement, and then give it to this board and get this board to agree to it, and then get the next board in May to carry on that vision because they, we hope agree to it at the same time. So it seems to me like you'd be way better off to do your baseline polling now, which you could do. Uh, where's the community's interest? Do they want a new middle school? Do they want boilers and floors, interested in a new athletic facility? You know, what, where do you want to have all the things that were on that list? Get that input, then give that to the committee, let the committee work that, massage that, turn that into a measure which you file for the November election. Give enough time for your new board, which will form and be identified in May and form in July to get up to speak, because you guys know what the learning curve was coming on, so that you can meaningfully go out and support this bond in November. If you want to do that. May, you're gonna lose it because you're not always organized enough or agreed upon enough to do it. We're just gonna throw good money after bad.
Yeah, that was my question myself.
But I'm trying to be here for that, so I'm gonna shut up. Two, like, the years, that enough? That's to reasonably adjust the issue. Yeah, we can put a good funding there.
Yeah, as soon as you tell us what you think makes sense, we can build a timeline. It's pretty much just May or November, so I just copy. And I think it's a November timeline.
See this timeline for next November and see, as we look at that out, see what time that leaves for making committees and community input, the time that it will give for that.
And I don't know. To do, because we just met recently and talked about a November, this coming November. And so basically I would just take that exact same timeline, change the years, and then give it to you again.
And then how would we go about starting the first steps though of actually maybe doing that broader polling now, so we could get an idea of where the community sits before we start making committees and all of that.
You don't need a motion other than that. Um, I actually have a, um, a person, a, a polling consultant lined up that's willing to speak to you at your October board meeting about polling and how it works and what, what kinds, how to make it happen. So if you're interested in that, um, you can zoom in and talk to you at your October board meeting. It is, but we have great internet.
Okay, perfect.
We have great internet in alignment now, just making sure. We can now.
I got, we don't need a. Can you, can we get ahold of the gentleman that ran the Albany and the Crestwell one?
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, Albany was June, I remember.
I just know those are the two lines. Okay, do you have any more discussion on three point two? Anybody? Nope, okay. Uh, thank you, Dr. Skinner. And now we'll go to three point three, community education partners.
Who cares?
I do, yeah, uh, Dwayne Porter is on Zoom.
They want us up here, Steve.
Steve, did you need that?
Oh.
Alright, can Dwayne hear us or can he speak? I know that he's speaking at the.
We promoted him to speaker.
I can hear you if you can hear me.
Okay, um, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, my name is Mandy Puckett, and I am the High Desert Christian Academy's, uh, Community Relations Director. And I am introducing, this is Maggie Hale. She is the principal of High Desert Christian Academy. And Deb Dalton, he's the president of Baker Technical Institute, trade school that has very long-term working relationship with Cook County. And Steve Barster, our city manager, um, for the city of Pineville. And Dwayne Porter is High Desert Christian Academy, uh, Board Director. So we are the five that'll be presenting to you tonight this short PowerPoint. And, um, just want to say thank you for the partnership and the collaboration, the discussions, the meetings we've had over several months. Um, we've been meeting on this for Joel. Yeah, it's been a while. And, um, input from board directors, input from staff, it's been really. And um, input from board directors, input from staff, it's been really very exciting um, process. That has gone really well over the past couple of months. So we're excited to present uh, the plan, um, the proposal here that we have for the school district tonight. So Joel, you can show the next slide.
Is it possible to kind of turn towards the crowd to the back?
Oh, sure, I need a microphone.
Or so you're in like a U, so I don't know that. Maybe, yeah, maybe swing back and.
Okay, um, I'll try to speak louder for people in the back too. Okay, so already went through our introductions, um, we're going to turn it over to Steve Forrester to start the presentation, so Steve.
Well, for the record, Steve Forrester, uh, thank you, board members and Madam Chair and. The rest of the staff here tonight, uh, appreciate the opportunity to talk about something I'm real passionate about, I think the community is as well. So I'll start out with, uh. I got to know Doug Dalton, who will speak in a few minutes, uh, several years ago. There's been several efforts in our community, uh, we think we are in a good spot to have a trade school. Uh, we, when I think of trade schools, I think of Wyoming, Wyoming Tech and the Phoenix uh. Institute where, you know, we have diesel mechanics, electricians, plumbers and such, and we think that our community. Has a, a culture that that fits real well. So I, I was able to connect with, with Doug several years ago, um, and. Learn about Baker Technical Institute and the work they've done, in particular, their coordination and partnering with. Colleges, local school districts and others, uh, businesses as well to. Craft the kind of technical training that each individual community needs. So as a result of that, Doug's been doing a lot of work in, in Prineville, he, he is a, like converted into a Prineville guy relatively quickly. Uh, and says he's a team roper, we share that in common, um, just for the record, you know, uh. How puppies and team ropers have a lot in common?
I don't.
They both whine a lot. I can say that from experience, but anyway, um, so Doug was a team roper, so we, we hit it off uh, relatively quickly. But we're really in an interesting situation here in Prineville, and I think that our community is right for this. I want to congratulate the. The board and, and Crete County School District for the work they've done in partnership with. With the data center community and, and the uh, CTE work that's been done, I think it's fantastic. Uh, this school's back on the map in my opinion, uh, we have a great education system here in Crete County and, and I want to build on that or would like. Think this is an opportunity to build on that rather. The interesting stat up there that you see is we're now the third highest average median income county in the state of Oregon. During the Great Recession, we were at the bottom, we were in the bottom five. Um, this is state information from Business Oregon, it's remarkable. Uh, it has a lot to do with the data center community and the construction, but also we have McCall Oil here. We've got Buckstock Bumpers, we got Superior Carriers out at the junction, we have uh, Endura that was sold to Masonite. Uh, we have a lot of good things going on in our community and not just the data centers and we want to continue to build on that. But as a result of that, we do have a high demand for the trades. In my opinion, and I think others would agrees that, that's a viable thing for us to be looking at and offer our young people as well as. Uh, adults uh, that want to transition to a new career. I would remind the audience and the members here today that. Our data center that's the fruit company. Is being ran, this site's being ran by Mr. Clay Allen, who grew up, went to school here, went to college here and was an electrician here. And now he's the head man, the boss, if you will, at, at the Apple Company uh, site in Prineville. I can tell you from experience that a lot of my brethren from my days in the millwork industry. Are up there and they've transitioned into all kinds of different jobs, whether that's logistics, food service. Tech, uh, as terms of the, the server tech positions. Uh, our mayor is, is switched from Les Schwab into that uh, high-tech uh, world and has done quite well. So there's a lot of opportunity up there. I make a comparison between. When I grew up and Scott's father was an electrician, my father was an electrician. I grew up on timber dollars, we had five sawmills here. Even in those days in the sixties and seventies, we were differentiated from Bend and Redmond. In that we were never the destination that they were, we didn't have Mount Bachelor and the other amenities that Bend in particular had. But we had jobs here, we had family wage jobs here. So I would rather be sawmills, I'll go on record as saying that, but it's not, it happens to be data centers driving a big part of that right now. So let's take advantage of it. Why were the sawmills important? Wasn't just the people that ran the sawmills. It was the truck drivers, it was the fasteners, it was the welders, it was the fabricators, it was the pipe fitters, it was all the people that. Took to support those operations. What are we seeing at the data centers? We're seeing the need for electricians, we're seeing the need for security, we're seeing the need for HVAC, we're seeing the need for diesel mechanics, for backup generators. A lot of similarities, more than I could have ever imagined would happen as a result of them being here. So with that being said, that. Construction activity and the numbers in terms of income that uh, those folks are being paid up there has brought that up. Now in that lies a big problem. The problem is, is there's been a lot of folks left behind. And that's a bad thing, our housing went up, uh, inflation has eaten up a lot of opportunity for folks that. Maybe aren't able for one reason, they're there to participate in the good fortune that we have that our average median income came up and there are jobs available. So we need to address that too, and I think this is one of the ways we're talking about tonight to make that a possibility. Doug has a very interesting statistic that I think he'll show you on college-bound folks versus uh, trade schools that. Uh, is fascinating and I hope that you share that, my friend. So that's what's going on there, uh, that's, I think that's an important statistic, Prineville has changed over the last fifteen years. Um, we have progressed in terms of the ability for people to make a family wage income. Keeping the culture and values, I mentioned that Clay Allen's up there, a lot of our folks are working or somehow connected to that data center. There's a lot of our folks that are over at Superior Carriers of the Junction or at Endura, Les Schwab's still a huge employer here. Uh, so we have a lot of those core competencies here in terms of jobs. But we're different than some of our contemporaries in the central Oregon region. In that we are a destination here, people love the Ochcos and Pringle Reservoir and all the amenities we have. But we'll, when compared to our other contemporaries in the Tri-County Region, we've got the jobs and we don't have. So much service jobs as we do a higher percentage of family wage jobs. So how do we build on that and how do we make that generational like it was when Mr. Cooper and I were growing up, which was what, ten or fifteen years ago? Anyway, so I, I think that's really important that we keep an eye on culture. Um, we provide some opportunity for kids that maybe aren't college-bound or don't want to be doctors or lawyers and those type of things. Um, that there's an opportunity with them, for them to be certified in welding, learn the trades, uh, electrician and plumber and pipe fitters and. All kinds of different things, diesel and, and then we also have the opportunity for other things, you know, and the health services and that sort of thing. And so I think it's really important that we take a real hard look at this opportunity. What partnerships can be materialized and coordinated between the school district and BTI. School up on the hill with these good folks and the opportunity they have with their, some of their infrastructure. And I think there's a real win in here for our community in Crete County to capitalize on the situation we find ourselves in here today. So I'd like to turn it back over to Doug, I, I'm very excited about this opportunity and, and real pleased I get to work with these folks and, and you as well.
So you took all of our times.
Yeah.
Much, much like Steve, appreciate the invite, the time tonight, uh, you know, BTI was invited to the table, I guess, by two or three different community members. When this conversation started, sprouting probably because of our affiliation with Prineville and Steve bringing BTI to, to Prineville really six years ago. Um, we're a nonprofit technical college is what our status is, we're overseen by the Higher Board of Education in the state of Oregon, we started about thirteen years ago. And we have two approved campus sites, um, to kind of prove that I'm a Prineville guy, right? Our headquarters is in Baker City, so this has actually started out of Eastern Oregon, which is rare. But our, our second approved campus site is in Prineville, so we're approved by the Higher Board of Education for a full campus here. The way we've been teaching is we just have great board members that come from Prineville and they give us. You know, Steve will let us use a city location, the county lets us use the fairgrounds, Porfilis let us use their ground, it's. It's really been the community surrounding us and supporting us and it has been fantastic, um, great people, I love it here, I love the culture. Um, but thirteen years ago when we started, um. Our board had a vision and said, you know what, we're coming out of the recession and we think the skilled trades are going to have a shortage of labor. Um, that was not what the governor was telling school boards of high schools. If you guys remember, the governor back then said, we have, we want a forty forty twenty plan, we want eighty percent of our students to go get a college degree. And some of the schools in Central and Eastern Oregon looked at their demographics and said that might not fit our community. And it might not fit our students and they didn't even talk about wages in that conversation, they talked about culture and jobs. Well, fast forward thirteen years. And the stat that Mr. Forrester wants me to mention is the students that graduate from your school district, they're going to make the most money. Are those pursuing the trades. This is the first time in all of our lifetimes, and this just happened recently, that the average skilled trades job now pays more than the average bachelor's degree. That has to change the conversation at every single school district in every community across the country, and it is. Every single student that walks into a guidance counselor or walks into Dr. Hoff or Dr. Skinner or Jake's office to talk about what they want to be and they say, I want to be a. If it's a welder, if it's a, a lineman, a nurse. Um, that conversation is just different than it used to be and it's an exciting time. Uh, we've grown, we entered this, we only focus on the trades, one hundred percent at our college and that makes us unique. Um, we have now expanded, we have satellite campuses in Idaho, Washington, all across California and all across Oregon. Um, it is booming, every single class we offered, every satellite location is full for two years. We can't hire enough, um, and we're only, we're not even denting in the market really, so I mean that. But what we get to do is I, I get to talk to CEOs of construction companies, of hospitals, all these. Entities that employ the skilled trades every single day. And with the money, first time in all of our generation again, we're actually putting. A significant amount of money into the infrastructure across the United States, so it's a record amount. And it's going to equate to thirty years worth of rebuilding all the roads, the highways, the ports, the airports. The EV stations, all the utilities along all of these roads, so all these construction companies that already didn't have enough labor. Are now in a panic, they've got more revenue ahead of them than they've ever had in history. They're planning on thirty years of it and they have no idea how they're going to get employees. Which means they raise wages. And they raise them again, and they raise them again, and they increase the benefits. They build their own management programs, so now if you're going out into the trades, one of the arguments was, well, that's great that you're making a family wage job. But you're capped because you didn't go to college. That barrier is being removed faster than we've ever seen in the history. So these companies are creating pathways from entry level to management within their own organizations. The college route wasn't working and guess what, if you have shareholders and you're trying to make millions and billions, you're going to solve it yourself and that's what industry's doing. So just to echo, and this is a conversation that. I know everybody nods their head and says, yes, it's well documented, the skilled trades are in demand. Um, sometimes what's not documented is, you know, the pendulum swings all the time from college to skilled trades. When it swung this time, a few years ago, post, kind of post COVID. They're not predicting it to swing back for thirty years, so it's a significant shift. Um, in wages, upward mobility, um, and just what it offers students really with very, very limited college debt. Um, we are graduates, we work at about thirty to forty different high schools around the Pacific Northwest, we work at all the tribes, we work for. A lot of the big organizations that, that train, you know, the Les Schwabs of the world and we bear up the Facebook and we train at your prison and. Um, we're graduating students that are six figures in all of these trades. Every single day, I mean, it is, it's amazing. So as the community in Prineville started talking about, man. Dr. Skinner's on fire, I would love to be the best CTE program in, in, in the state and we have other community organizations saying, wow. Let's grow, we already have a great CTE program, let's grow it. Let's train our adults in the community, let's train our high school students, let's offer middle school and elementary students more of a vision into the trades. Let's be the best there is. Communities can say that and I hear it, um, from California to Wyoming and everywhere, I hear it. When Mr. Forrester said there's a unique opportunity in Prineville, I have yet to see the stars aligning like they are here anywhere. So I, I really, I, I think maybe taking the time like you are on your bond to really grasp this. It's a significant thing that I'm seeing and it is the funding that's available and it's the funding that's potentially available that the city's going to have. Um, along with the fact that nobody's doing this anywhere in your region, I think Prineville. By having the, the culture, the funding and the school district plugged in the way they are. I actually think Prineville could have something pretty special that we haven't seen in the Pacific Northwest, the timing's absolutely right. To create something that could train more than just who you're training right now, bring some partners together. Um, and have something really significant, so. I'm just, I'm kind of a cheerleader here, I'm just here to help the community, but BTI is all in, so I mean, if, you know, and we'll partner with. We can bring three or four colleges in and we all do what we do best, I mean, that's really something that's, that's meant to be, but um. We're here to support. And whatever you guys decide, I had the pleasure of meeting with your district leadership today. And some of your secondary leadership, we went through your CTE programs, really talking about. How do we bring more certifications and just do more with what we have already today and then fantastic conversations, so. I just, if we, if you guys decide to grow something and build something special in Prineville, I, I think that the next twenty-four months is really, is really times right, so.
So, um, we have been, we put our heads together for the past several months and our first meeting was in Joel's office. Before Dr. Skinner um, arrived and we said, hey. Um, High Desert Christian Academy has, is in the process of buying the old hospital on the hill, it's about thirteen acres of property. And about ninety to ninety-two thousand square feet of building space. And so Dr. Skinner got to come up when she started right away and check it out, um, Eric came up, Anna came up, Leland. Um, we just had a room full of people and then we just started inviting people to come up and tour, tour the space, so. Um, we, we did our, put our listening skills on and asked the community, what do you, what do you want to see, what do you want to hear? Um, what do you want for the future of Crete County? And I do hair part-time and I work for the school part-time and so people talk at hair salons in case you didn't know. So, um, a lot of parents said they want these things that you see on, on the screen. And then when I started approaching community partners like Joel, like Dr. Skinner, like. Um, Seth Crawford or Mayor, um, Steve Forrester, we reached out to Doug Dalton, it was all matching. And so when you talk about your polls, I mean, yes, ours is informal, but ours is grassroots, it's definitely just people talking to people in the community. These are the things that the community said they wanted. Um, childcare and early education, uh, Maggie's going to speak next on what we've seen there. The childcare, thanks to the Neighbor Impact Grant and Scott's work with Maggie. Has really helped the childcare option explode at High Desert Christian Academy and so it's. It's really a community daycare now and they're remodeling rooms to make more space for more families. Um, after-school care is another thing that I see on Facebook. Weekly, of people saying, what do you do for your kids? Because there's kids club. But just like everybody else, like Doug was saying, it's people and how do you hire more people? To be able to fill these roles because the demand and the need is there. Um, we're offering our after-school program is approaching capacity as well. To our hiring more people, um, K through twelve dual enrollment was something the community, particular parents really, really want to see. Um, we have Grizzly Mountain Home Link and so we looked at the good work that the school district has done to create that over the past four years. Um, and the option of it, I went through that program when COVID hit and I've experienced it, I know a lot of friends and. Colleagues have experienced Grizzly Mountain and kind of taking on what's already been created in the community, whether by the school district. By the trade school partnerships with the city and just expanding, enhancing it, revitalizing it and making it the best it can be is what people really want to see. Um, I've heard homeschool parents wanting to be enrolled in the school district but be able to still. Utilize the classes of homeschool or the Christian school or an online academy. And be able to do that and not feel like their parents have to fit the bill for that. So those were the things that we, we have heard a lot about dual enrollment. Partnering with Parks and Rec, um, the Crete County Parks and Rec Director has signed the letter of support, which I'll explain in a minute. On how he can partner and be up on the campus. Um, to offer more of these things in unison with the city and the school district, career in trades was huge, as you just heard from Steve and Doug. Um, the community is really excited about that, um, just the opportunity to. Have a career or trade option and not have to go to college, um, for students that aren't going to take that path. Um, gym, we've heard a lot about the gym, um, people need more youth activities and more space. For their sports practices and clubs, the gymnasium has come up over and over, uh, we had a travel. We had a travel ball team approach the school and want to see the basement because the basement at the HGCA, Eric's looked at that and he's like, yeah, this is an awesome tech department. So. Eric, your input has been really helpful. There's a team that wants to see if they can have parents pitch in to finish the cages down there and make it like hitting facilities because we only have one really hitting facility that I know of. And it's, it's used a lot. So the teams are kind of fighting for space. Transportation, if there is a way to get buses going between the schools, up to the campus and up to some of these trade sites that we could create. Where people could hop and go between the buildings for their classes is something that's come up. We already solved one of that issues thanks to Kirk County School District. Because we had parents that were, couldn't get into kids club and so they were enrolling in the after-school program up at HGCA. And HGCA staff was taking our two small minivans down to the different elementary schools at the school district to bus kids up to the after-school program. And it just took a phone call to your bus department and Shannon was like. Oh yeah, the, the students can get off right there in Elm and Loper. And now there's kids that the parents don't have to worry about. How their kids can get to the after-school program. So. If we work together, some really cool things happen. And then family services. And we've been asked if we can offer more family services up in that big building space up there. And those are, that's kind of what we want the campus to be, as an educational center and a hub. In partnership with the school district and partnership with the city. We've already got the police department right there in the corner of the property. We've got the water tanks that the city comes up and maintains and so. It's a great use of space. It's where Les Schwab had a room that we want to do a memorial for his room there. It's where a lot of people, including my husband, was born. So there's something really special about using a building that's so historical and changing it, repurposing it. And making it available to the community for this purpose. So. I think that's what Steve and Doug mean by just partnering in an opportunity to really make a difference in Kirk County. So those are the items the community wanted. And you can go to the next slide for the next one. So this is the letter of community support. It's short and I'll just read it and I have the clipboard that people want to sign tonight that haven't. So the goal of the educational center or hub, as we're calling it. Is to empower our workforce to thrive by enhancing access to education and family support services in Kirk County. The vision would be to build capacity that addresses the educational and family support needs of our community. From the very youngest to the very oldest in Kirk County. The mission is to revitalize and transform the High Desert Christian Academy property located at one-two-zero-one Northeast Elm Street in Prineville. And change it from a hospital into a central educational hub for childcare, for preschool. For K through twelve dual enrollment education, trade schools, extracurricular activities, a gymnasium. And family support services for Kirk County. And that, where to contact us if you want to add, you can just sign on the website if you don't have access to this clipboard. But if you want to sign your signature, it's here and we're just continuing to grow it. Our plan is to put this into a funding proposal. And we already have tremendous community support. The mayor has signed, the county commissioners, most of them have signed. We're getting ready to go present to the city council and county commission. All of those things will help us put together a proposal that we believe is a really grant fundable opportunity. Seth, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sure. My name's Seth Crawford. I just want to look like the same thing everybody up here is saying is we have a great CTE program, really excited about it. I, I talk with colleagues, I'm a county commissioner, I talk with colleagues all over the state. Nobody has anything close to what we have currently. And I just think it's so exciting that we're talking about moving it to that next level because you know, it's always great to be best, but somebody's coming for you. So you better keep, uh, keep stepping it up. As for the building, oh, before I even wanted that. I, I don't know if everybody knows here, our parents here from the senior center. Your CTE program is going to be replacing the floor at the neat repeat. Probably close to about a hundred thousand dollar project. Forty thousand dollars in supplies from Meta. And then sixty thousand dollars in labor from students at Kirk County that will not only be helping the seniors. But they'll be learning construction skills throughout the year. And so what, what a great opportunity for somebody who needs something and somebody who also needs something with your skills. To be able to move into the future. So just one really great example. I know there's horses on the range and quite a few other ones, but I don't think they've ever tackled something quite this large. So I think you, everybody should be extremely proud of, of the CTE program and what it already has. Finished. As for the building, my grandfather, Joe Stansik was part of the people that the chairman, we were on the board to help build that hospital. And I think you'd be extremely proud to see something like this going on there. He was also the first person in his family to graduate college. Getting education and those things. And that was something very important to him. And so I know that he would be extremely excited about projects like this moving forward. So that, that's all I have to say.
Just a little bit more tidbit on kind of how we've connected with the school district and the different staff. I mentioned that Dr. Skinner, Joel, Cheyenne and Jessica, Jennifer and I have had conversations. We want all the board members to be invited. I know there's rules about you guys can't be in the same room or same time. So we're individually emailing everybody, trying to, to let you know, we will come up and follow whatever rules we need to follow. Just to have you come up and ask questions and look at the sheer amount of space that can be used up there. Dr. Skinner and Joel showed me a new draft that they're working on of the CTE programs. Jake Huffman and I had met. Brian Cochran and I have met and in fact, Ryan and I met Saturday at our kids' football game and talked about it for quite a while. About just how we can work together and just enhance what's already started in Kirk County and really being able to provide the space. As a good starting point. For the indoor trades in particular. We have really nice ERs, ORs up there, lots of clinic space, lots of exam rooms. Classroom space, conference room space. It just needs to be used. So really that's what's in it for HGCA is we want, obviously it would help all of us to be win-win-win is really what we're looking for is to make use of that, that great space. So Maggie, you want to show the map of?
You bet, you bet. So. So first I, I would like to thank you guys for seeing us today and how honored I am just to be with these great people. But this is our property, this is our facility. And the blue, the one and two is what the city owns. So that's the one is where the city, the Prineville Police Department is. And two is where the water city is. The city water is, I'm sorry. And then three is where you, that cross, which was never, you know, like, we didn't realize that was happening, but that's where our school is and it's in a cross. And so the seven with the yellow around it, that's leasable. Are, it's for self, the, for sellable property. This, the other red parts are leasable property. Five is where the the operating rooms are and the emergency room and four is where the old clinic used to be. And over on that east cross, cross is where our early learning division is and up north is where we are expanding. And a big thank you to Neighbor Impact Grant for doing that with Scott Cooper. And in the other west wing is where the old maternity ward was. And then down going south is where all of our elementary classes are going into our junior high and high school into the old pharmacy. So that is our property and I would love to see in that fair property on six. New gymnasium. Somebody mentioned to me and I, Scott and I talked about this, about having a two level, where was that at? That was like on the East Coast, right? Where you'd have a pool on the bottom. And then on the second floor, you'd have a gymnasium. So, I mean, just, this is just vast opportunity. So we'd love to see that. So, but thank you.
Okay. So Maggie had mentioned number seven and the reason why it's highlighted in yellow is Kim Patterson, who's here with us tonight, she is also a HGC board member. It has been working with the city quite extensively. We went through quite the process to even get into this building. So there's occupied permits and things like that. So. Just to kind of keep the process going. And so we're able to show parts of the building, but they, we have to go through an occupy permit, which isn't that hard if we're going to start utilizing more parts of the building. In that process, we learned that seven, which is the old hospice building, is its own tax lot. In fact, there's two tax lots, one big one and then one at the very bottom left corner by the storage unit. So those two can be sold. It's an option to either lease or buy or lease to buy. And so that's what we've offered to the school district and through our discussions over the past several months. Dwayne is going to start, take this part, but the board members should all have this financial options. We continue to just meet and ask, what does the school need? What is the community need? Where can we come up with a win-win-win? And so we've offered a couple of options that are that Dwayne is going to go over, but I just want to make sure the board has that. If you need extra copies, I have them here. Now to the next slide. Real quick, cause this came up in, in question through the processes, what can HGCA's property really bring now? And so right now, we have a lot of capability to do the indoor trades. Which there's just a couple of examples on the screen. I know Dr. Skinner had mentioned Vet Tech. We definitely have medical opportunity up there. There's nursing opportunities, dental hygiene, any of the health sciences. Computer sciences, technology, culinary arts, business. You name it, we could get creative. There's a lot of space up there, like I said, for small classrooms, conference rooms, but there's also trade hands-on trade opportunities up there as well. As far as the future. The community has shown immense support for outdoor trades and like Doug Dalton had mentioned, we'd love to be able to expand if we can get this hub started. To start bringing in our partners like SMAF, like all of the partners that Doug has already been working with. And know that we have site locations because some of these trades, they just, they need more room. You know, Doug came and toured, toured the campus and even that big piece of property that you see is blank is still not quite big enough, is it Doug, for some of your trades? So. You know, we could, we could look, want to expand to more sites in the future. So. We got to start somewhere and that's kind of why we're here, here tonight. So go to the next slide. Okay, so with that, I mentioned the community support, letter of support already has almost two hundred signatures on it of people of all kinds of backgrounds and work experiences. Our community partners are showing support. And if you want to sign, please do right there on the clipboard and then look at HGCA's website if you want to sign electronically. So Dwayne, with that, it's over to you.
Thank you, Mandy. Can you hear me okay? Wonderful. First, let me take a minute and I will be quick, but apologize for having to attend via Zoom. I'm in Atlanta, Georgia. Today, so. I'd like to start first briefly by quoting Joel Barker, author, filmmaker and lecturer. Vision without action is merely a dream. Action without vision just passes time. Yet vision with action can change the world. We have a vision. It's, the vision is much bigger than any of us individually, any of our organizations individually. You've heard a lot from Steve, Doug, Mandy, Maggie, Seth, even chimed in there. We have an opportunity and HDCA has taken the first step in securing the old iconic hospital, which is an iconic structure. We've heard some of that this evening. I, I personally refer to it as Hospital Hill, if you will. It's a central location to the city. It's a tremendous opportunity for something that the community, the region, the area needs. In supporting not just trades, but complete education K through on. All the way through adulthood. So tonight we're here with two asks of the board. One is the support of the, the letter that we have, the support of the vision and the mission. Which again, as I said, is, is bigger than any of us individually or any organization individually. And we will continue to drive and push that vision through. Cause it is so important. We've heard that over and over tonight. And number two is to proceed forward with the financial partnership with HGCA, the vision for the school district. And the needs of what we've been talking about the last few months. You have several proposals that we've put together. And so we're at, that's the second, second ask we're asking for this evening. And so we just asked to, to consider that, move forward. This is a tremendous opportunity. We've seen Kirk County and Prineville change in so many good ways. But as Steve said earlier, also giving us a chance to keep our culture that is unique to Kirk County. Keeping our culture the way it is here, but continuing to be and drive forward to be an educational hub. Or as I know Doug had quoted at one point, an educational destination center for not just Prineville, not just Kirk County and not just Central Oregon, but the entire region as a whole. So we, we've taken a lot of time tonight and I really appreciate and for all of us, we want to thank you for, for listening to us and hear us out. And again, reiterate, we have two asks of you tonight and I lay those on the table and thank you again so much for your time and all the respect that you've allowed us this evening.
Lock up an earnest money agreement of two hundred and twenty thousand dollar down payment. To lock up this partnership.
And we're just talking about the seven, that's the lease because I don't know, is that something that you're purchasing for the emergency room area with all the CTE part?
Well, I like, I was just trying to figure out the parts here. To lock up the.
But it's just for number seven though. It's just the tax.
Point of order is that mature. Could we maybe get a second before we discuss the motion?
I'll second it. That way I can. So we have a motion on the table to do an earnest money agreement of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is that right, Cheyenne? And I have a second on the table. Let's open this up for discussion.
Alright, so that's just the seven, right? This, this part right here. Oh. That, that part of the parcel, that's just the tax. So the other parts for all the CTE things are not included in this area? No, that's, that's the offer for the school district. I mean, it's, it's up to the school district what they need it for.
The thought was that we had talked before about moving Grizzly Mountain up there. But I had met with Dr. Skinner and Joel and talked about some of the the uses for this building area. Some of the thoughts that kind of were talked about were moving Grizzly Mountain, our tech department. Who go up there right now are paying a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year to hide this efficient, oh, to high desert ESD to rent this building. It has the ability to house our tech department, our Grizzly Mountain, our nutritional services. If we move Grizzly in our the district, the district office up there. So that we would have all of those things up there. If Grizzly Mountain was up there, it would do just that. It would open it up to a dual enrollment. And we would start by having skin in the game and being there at the educational center and Grizzly Mountain Kids, it would be a perfect opportunity. To dual enroll with some of the trades and.
That's what I was asking. We're still just talking Grizzly and district office. Or that, that didn't mean to put you off, but I'm just thinking all the CTE things are not included though in this part that's being asked. So that's like a whole separate area. Dwayne, are you?
My understanding was the CTE portion would come from BTI.
It can. I mean, I'm really going to let you need to decide the where. You know, I'm not really advocating the where. This, this works for some CTE and it doesn't work for others. At this point, we are not acquiring any of the building, just to be clear. So. We're here to support wherever you build it and whatever you, whatever you decide.
Right. We have a vision to go forward and that's CTE. So as we move forward with and hopefully that partnership may be with Baker Institute, we're looking for Kirk County to take the second step. HDAC, HDCA is taking the first. And developing this program into having those CTE, having those career paths, having that community center, that educational hub. And there's a, there, there's a future to be able to continue to grow that, which we hope for. we hope for, you know, all of the parties sitting at the table now to continue coming in and being a part of that.
Hey, Dwayne, I I might be misunderstanding, Dr. Skinner. Are you, are you wondering if Kirk County School District can have access to the E Rs, the O Rs, like other parts of the campus for this, the trades? Is that what you're?
Potentially, I was just saying, because the ask right now, I think with the the monies is just for the one wing, we would not necessarily be leasing or purchasing or having any access to the C T.
Dr. Skinner, you are cor- you are correct. The goal being to have that collaborative partnership to be able to utilize the other facilities with other, the other institutions, i.e. we would hope that may be Baker Institute, but if it's not, maybe other to be able to have that. That's the goal is independent standalone institutions that are collaborating into a central educational hub environment for our region.
Okay, so just so I'm crystal clear, because I'm still trying to follow. Number seven is where you're talking about putting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars earnest money down. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that seven has a wing in there?
That whole building.
And then it has the rest of the property there.
And it's its own tax lot.
Okay.
Correct.
Is, is that week? So two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And you are thinking you would move, go into there? Tech, Grizzly Mountain? Nutrition services?
And Grizzly Mountain.
Is this wing completely up to par? Is all the electrical good? Is all the, is everything, like it's ready to move in right now and be fully functional? Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
No.
So maybe the bowlers are out. Dwayne, do you want to speak to the? Two, it's five, maybe. I I want to make sure I'm getting the, I just remember something.
Yeah, there's, there's some updating that needs to be done. Um for the purposes of, as Dr. Skinner, you and I had talked about, for the purposes of the school district, updating security, updating pieces of the building would need to be necessary in order to reach the security levels, et cetera, of current requirements for where you'd have kids. That might be a little different for administration. I can't speak to that because that's the school district. But there is some updating that would need to be done.
Okay, my next question is, Leland, I'm looking to you for this. Have you seen this building?
Yes.
Well, how much would it cost to be ready to move in all of these departments that they're had, they're speaking of?
Until we go through and test plumbing age factor and all of those systems, I don't know at this point. I have no idea what we'll have to do then.
Do you have a timeframe? And so in that year, we're putting two hundred thousand dollars down. What is our payment? Is that a monthly payment? Is that a yearly payment we'd be doing on this property?
So at least for what's like school year.
So are we looking at option?
No, the motion was earnest money, which is for a purchase.
Right.
You're just spending four point eight million dollars, ten minutes after you got a presentation.
Wait, that's what I'm trying to get all my questions answered. So I'm making sure I'm looking at this correctly. I want to make sure I'm not missing a vital piece of this. And what is wrong with our current building here for?
That, how long have?
District office?
How long have we been in this building?
Four hours here. Twenty years.
Twenty years. So we spent uh hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year over twenty years. And we've never looked at any brick and mortar buildings. And the school district is constantly saying we need space, we need space, we need space. We're given the opportunity to if we were able to move the nutritional services and some of the stuff out of Steen's pillar, that would open up space. Helpfully, the middle school for a K through eight. We have the option to partner for a gym. We'd be able to put Grizzly Mountain, which we just wanted to give an I D to as a brick and mortar school. We'd be able to save a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year. I'm not sure how good.
Because we're responsible for all utilities every single month, whereas it's my understanding utilities are included currently at the district office. Is that correct?
It's still a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
Just to raise the point of information, Madam Chair, I haven't been on this board since two thousand and four, but I have been since two thousand and nine. And we have looked three times at different facilities and always decided this was the better deal. So where is the rest of the, where is your other four million dollars coming from that you have to pay? Where's that coming from?
From your budget. You have to, there, there's a ten-year plan. I think there's the eligibility to do a ten-year plan. Um, I think that we talk, we have the Facebook and Apple roll-off stuff coming that we talked about last meeting, sitting down at the table and figuring out how we're gonna allocate those funds, what we're gonna do with that. I think the the property's value, what's the property of the value, or the value of the property, I'm sorry, right now.
Sorry, Dwayne's texting me. He can't really hear what you guys are saying. If you have a question for him, he just can't hear.
Yeah, the about, what's the property value that? I mean, we spent, we spent four point two million dollars on Pioneer Building for sixty kids. Four point two million dollars on a modular. I think Anna is gonna ask us, we, we've been spending two million dollars. It's two point. We've done two million dollars for modulators and we're getting offered a brick and mortar building. I would ask what exactly are the maintenance issues with modulators? How much money are we gonna have to dump into those over the years? Look at all the issues we're having out of Palview. So we're actually being given an option to have, own our own land.
You don't have the money right now to buy it. The modulators and the Pioneer Building came out of special funds. This is coming out of the operating fund. And the benefit of the data centers is rolling in the city and the county, not the school district. Our gets eaten up by the equalization part of us. We wouldn't get the benefit of it if we passed a bond, but in our operations money, we'll get nothing.
Well, are there options to work towards that? I mean, you're not asking for the four point three million or the four point five, four million dollars?
No.
For this year.
No, we're not. In fact, the proposals, the proposals we had, which you should have copies of, were a lease option to buy. And what we're asking for is the funds to take it off a market, to take it off of and and partner with the Creek County School District to be able to come to an arrangement that is appropriate and lease that portion till an appropriate time, whether it's through bond or other funding or that's, that's not, that's where the school district needs to decide or the board needs to decide where that goes. What we're looking for is a secure of dollars for a lease option to purchase in multiple arrangements and sit down at the table and negotiate that.
So, Dr. Skinner.
Otherwise, we will not, otherwise, I mean, I guess the alternative, just to be very clear, is you know, we presented the the vastness of this vision. We, we believe it's absolutely imperative also for the bigger vision to partner with Creek County School District going forward. We don't want to have to go or we don't want to go other options that we have, and that's why we're asking for that security.
So quick question, sorry. The two hundred and twenty thousand dollar earnest money, it looks like you want that on nine sixteen, next week, Monday? Is that correct? It's not correct. That, yeah.
No, it says a hundred thousand.
Right.
I was looking at, I was looking at. Asked for the modulators tonight. We're being asked for three modulators at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars each. I think that during COVID, we spent over, I want to say we spent close to five hundred thousand dollars on modulators. We just spent a million dollars on modulators.
Okay, so the, we're talking about two separate issues right now. So coming back right to this one right in front of us, right? Three point three. You're asking for an earnest money agreement of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'm asking, you're wanting that by nine sixteen, or is that a different, I mean?
Yeah, I need to call a timeout here. Uh, Doug and I are here to promote the C E T. I don't want to back out on what we're trying, what you guys are faced with right here. Um, Dwayne made it very clear to both Doug and I, they were gonna have an ask tonight uh, of the school board, financial, and we support C E T. I don't want to speak for you, Doug. But we, we, we are not part of this party, their negotiation. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus about C E T. And if this works, great. But I don't want anybody here, I want to be very clear, that Doug and I are here to support this idea and this concept. Um, how you guys want to discuss the the opportunity for this purchase is that that's on you. The other timeout I want to give you is a suggestion is, I, I would assume that, and I I think I'm reading your mind, Mr. Cooper, and probably all of you, but uh, there's probably some more work that needs to be done here. Um, for you guys to make an informed decision, and I'm gonna leave it at that. But I'm gonna excuse myself.
Oh, wait, Steve, can you not? You too. I have a minute. I, I just want to say, I want you to build your B T I campus in Primeville. I really want that to happen. I want to be a partner in making that happen. So I think it's good for the community. I think it's good for kids. I want you to have your alternative campus. I like educational alternatives for families to be able to choose from. And I think that is the future of education. And traditional education is having a really hard time getting used to that idea, but that's where we're headed, whether we like it or not. We always said for many, many years, we couldn't do all card education. And then Kobe came along and guess what? We did all card education. And everybody wants to put the genie back in the bottle. That isn't gonna happen. So I want you to get yours. I do think that the reas- the way revenues are gonna flow in future from the data centers is a big deal. And this is gonna be potential, those revenues could potentially really help our community in building really good paying jobs and giving us great opportunities and building tax bases for the city and county and building new opportunities for economic development and all those wonderful things that will benefit you, but won't necessarily benefit us financially as a district. And I wonder if there's a way for you and you and us to get together and put together a three-way deal in financing this that works for everybody after doing some due diligence and some inspection into where that site would be and how it would all work together. I think that partnership is there if we give ourselves the time to do it.
Right, yeah. So, so is that the question you wanted to ask me, Scott? Yeah, so.
Because I really do.
Yeah, you're, you're good at that. So, so Scott's exactly right, as I understand it, in that the incremental growth and tax-based revenue that comes on in twenty twenty seven. Um, this is public information, our model, and we have some certainty that that's around fifteen million dollars that will be split between the taxing districts. Our, our partners or our uh, uh comparables in other parts of Oregon that have gone through the long-term tax abatement, that, that's consistent with what they've seen. So it, it's uncomfortable for me to say we should spend it before we get it, and that's what the city's not doing. And so, but having said that, what the city has done is we brought in uh outside people to help the council define what those priorities are. Within that, and that has been completed, and within that is very clearly this type of thinking, you know, what can be done infrastructure-wise, what can be done amenity-wise, and what can be done community-wise with education being important, being very important on the list. So that's, that's the opportunity that I believe Scott, you're talking about, Mr. Cooper, I should say. Um, that we're talking about in that there is that opportunity for partnership. And I've shared that with with these two fine people and with, with Dwayne as well, is that's gonna take some time. Twenty twenty seven is just around the and, and when that happens, that's a lot of revenue to Scott's point that will come to the taxing districts. Now, when that starts to happen in twenty twenty eight, there's another one. In twenty thirty, there's another one. In twenty thirty two, there's another one. If you think about it, there's been ten billion so far invested up there and they're not done yet, in my opinion. Our whole tax base in Cook County is two. So I'm not saying we're gonna get assessed at ten billion. That's not going to happen, but it's probably gonna be significantly greater than two. So we need to be preparing now as districts, this district, the city. I know Steph and his team and Suzie are working on it on the county side is setting up what is the highest and best use of that incremental growth. And therein lies the opportunity that Mr. Cooper is talking about, in my opinion, for partnering and funding streams. Suzie Hemrich told me something this morning that is exactly one hundred percent right, is we don't have it yet. And until we see it, we shouldn't be spending it. And so uh we can plan for it and hopefully it happens. And I think it will. I think there's, from a probability standpoint, there's a very high probability it will. All the, all the uh details will understand more between now and twenty twenty seven, but it is gonna be significant. Right, wrong, or indifferent. If they're just frickin' hay sheds, it's gonna be significant. So there's just a lot of money involved with this transaction. So, having said that, I do agree with Mr. Cooper, is how do we work on this together between now and, and when those funding become very real? And therein lies the opportunity. The other thing I, I can't help but say it, and I know Anna, you're on it, is the impact this is gonna have on your bonding authority and capabilities is gin- ginormous. And again, the same situation, different scenario. Instead of getting the money through taxes, you'll have the bonding authority widely on the existing bonds that you have today and your opportunity going forward. And we better be really, really smart on that, in my opinion, before we start taking action. Because we don't want to misallocate, as, as they would say. So uh, we have a lot of work to do. And, and the sooner we get started on it, the better. And so I would encourage the board to make the investment in time and maybe expertise, outside expertise if necessary, to really understand those impacts and what's the best course of a action strategically to utilize those. Now, it's my turn to shut up.
Doug, thank you so much, because there's amazing partnerships that I can't wait to do for C T. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
I love the idea. I love everything about that. You'll be that shining city on the hill. But I think to do this right now is just fiscally wildly irresponsible. Madam Chair, I move to table current motion. Does she have to okay it or not?
Somebody has the second. So we have a s- motion to table the discussion till a further time, and we have a second on the table.
Shouldn't tables discussable, I think.
Okay, so discussion for the motion to table this.
So my thought would be to table this motion, which we can always bring back again by moving to take it off the table at a future meeting. And then we'll substitute, then that'll clear the decks, and we can then make a motion, which I'm happy to make, to um, create a study committee to see how we can get to this with maybe a little more due diligence than we've had tonight. I'm not, I'm not opposed to continue to pursue this. I just don't want to commit earnest money tonight.
Think I'd like a, a little bit clearer timeline on that table. Because I think you could push it off for months and never go anywhere, you know?
You could.
I think there needs to be some sort of direction to bring back information or build whatever Scott is asking for. I think this falls kind of like the bomb thing where we just continually bring it up and the timelines are never right. So I think having a better idea of what a timeline looks like would be better.
Do you have a timeframe?
No, I'm offering a timeframe. I'm offering motion to table.
And we have a second for that motion to table it. So my question is, we have a motion for the earnest money with a second. We now have a motion to table this till a further timeframe and a second. Do I have it clear? Absolutely. Okay. So do you take a vote on both or just the latter?
The motion on the motion, vote to table. If the vote, vote to table passes, then we're open for new motions. If the motion fails, then we take a vote on the first motion.
Okay. So we're going to vote on if we table this, table this discussion at a further time, which is an undetermined amount of time of this right now. And we have a second on that. All in favor of tabling this at a further date, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed? Do you have a? No. Oh, I didn't hear fan. Okay. Okay, so we have a vote of three to two to table this. Till a further date. Till a further date. This will be determined. And the first one is no longer, correct? Yes.
Sure, I move to. Request the superintendent convene a work group, including representatives of city and county. To try and investigate feasibility. Need and financing. For investing in this um. And to bring that back to a for a report. Um, at the October meeting and possible action.
Then kind of looking at what it was, the public record, what it was bought for, maybe some of the feasibility, any of that, just the.
Need feasibility, purpose, the whole shebang, see what you can figure out between now and Monday. And bring us some sort of recommendation or a minimum of report. That is a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table of Scott winning to ask the superintendent to convene a work group. At city, county, um, including city, county, uh to see the need, the financing, the feasibility of it. Um, we have a second on the table, do we have any discussion?
Uh, I'd love to see a board member in there, but I just kinda would leave it to the superintendent to figure out her team. The members of the committee.
So let's take a vote, all in favor of Scott's motion. I can say ask for a discussion, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. Um, all in favor of this, uh, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
And then lastly, my chair, I would just like to say to the lady in the back with the baby, don't you worry about that baby, because that's the voice of our future students. Our future taxpayers and our future voters.
Oh, yes.
I'd like to make one more motion to uh have. The district sign their letter of support for the educational hub that we are. Interested in partnering with them, at least looking at that.
Yeah, it's fine, it's okay. Okay, so we have a motion for the district to sign the letter of support. And we have a second. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
The board members are signing that, but is. So you're asking me to sign that, I just wanna make sure it wasn't board members driving.
Three point four is superintendent board working agreements, Dr. Skinner.
Yes, so on this uh special, well, the work uh group slash retreat, we went through with um. Rockess and did the superintendent school board working agreements and made some of those uh tweets and just bringing that back for you tonight. Um, to take a look at. That was in the. That was in the update a week ago, three very big ones as well. And the changes were made as we went through this at a work session. Changed the board serves instead of the count of the two. There was an extra line down at the bottom that was about accountability, we just merged merged that one with number two, just per your request.
My chair moved to adopt the twenty-four point five superintendent and school board working agreements.
Do we have a second? I second it. So we have a motion on the table to approve the superintendent board working agreements for twenty-four, twenty-five and a second. We have discussion.
I'm just gonna say, I didn't second this because I've never liked these before and I've never agreed to them. When I grow both of this one, because it seems to be important to to be a new superintendent of security. But I really think a functioning board should require, you're required to have this mutual respect should take care of.
They're just saying that this is a working agreement with the board and the superintendent. And we had a work session on it last week. For the week, we've had so many meetings this month, we've had a work that was on it. And Scott was just saying that he doesn't like to sign these because he just likes to have mutual respect, like we should know to respect each other. Having to put something formal is.
All right, do you have more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five superintendent school board working agreements, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Three point five superintendent goals and evaluation timeline, Dr. Skinner.
Yes, so um you should have a separate page with a little typo, um, despite a spelling, so I think you had a separate device. Line um out, it says superintendent evaluation timeline. Um, this was also talked about and had the work session in terms of the plan, September, bringing that to the board comes in the goal. November being mid, January being final, it's a very quick, early evaluation, so. When we get to the actual standards, we lessen those because of the timeframe from July fifteenth to January is a short amount of time. So we decided on one goal, which the one goal um is there, foster a positive culture and climate during the months of July through December. Working on establishing that positive culture and climate. Uh, in the Britt County School District, authentic listening teamwork, active learning about our schools, community stakeholder. Placing priority on teaching and learning and being highly visible, engaged and active in the schools and the community. And then below that, you'll see some strategies, actions and activities, one being board relationship and communication. Then to do that, you'll see one point one to one point six, will be some different strategies and activities that I can do to meet that. Number two being community engagement, same thing, two point one to two point seven. And then on the back, you'll see the last one, which is schools and learning. Um, and again, some bigger strategies that I can use to accomplish that goal. As well as indicators of success, being able to measure that goal. So one goal, definitely several activities and strategies that. Um, in terms of artifacts, things I can bring you and put in place and do to be able to meet that goal.
Dr. Skinner, I had one question. Three point seven, the student advisory line.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe I gotta make sure to pull students from every section, like not like academics, drama, sports.
Yeah, so at our administration meeting on Thursday, and I talked to the president about how many per uh campus, what grade levels. Um, you said different sports. Yeah, yeah. And so I'll have a um, and that'll be created um in terms of an advisory committee, and then I'll be able to kinda hear from our student body. From um elementary, or solidly up um to high school, um at each campus and across section. And then, of course, the the main goals will be talking about relationships. And then, of course, different programming and academic rigor in the schools.
Uh, Dr. Skinner, what do you consider when you say stakeholders, who is that?
Uh, stakeholders can be community members, um.
We say like introduction letters, the internal, if they're most stakeholders.
Yes, so I did one um already that was sent out to internal, which was to invite, welcome back, this is, you know. A new, I did a welcome video already in terms of registration. Um, so some of those videos, even the kinder reading series to the community, and then um some external, when we have the co- convocation, asking business partners for the vendors. Um, prizes, things like that, so that was kinda the first step, but then obviously that was just July, so. Being here for just a month and a half, that was one activity that I will continue meeting with those different stakeholders.
Dr. Skinner, I wanted to suggest maybe a slight amendment for three point two.
Okay.
We have visit every classroom in the district, I think that's ambitious of you and. Yeah, you, but that's a lot of driving around when you're not administering the district, I'm not sure that's not overkill. And maybe we would be better off to be regularly present in every school in the district.
Okay.
Would like to see you regularly in the buildings, but maybe every classroom's a little bumpy.
Be regularly present in every building or every on every campus. I could do it, I've already been in several, went to the high school, we saw some great professional development already implemented, first couple of days of school, so.
Maybe we can make that your aspirational goal, if you achieve it, great, but the performance goal is at least be regularly present.
So where are we at on two point seven?
Oh, so that, yes, um, so Jay just spoke with our candidate, we're just doing the final um negotiation. So it's been offered and just trying to wrap that one up, so a phone call will actually go back tomorrow with some reaffirmation that was gathered today. To see what we um thinks about that.
And then can we clarify where and how Rob fits into this process? Are we done with Rob, that he still shadows through this? I thought we had him, I thought it was like your first year, you had. The ability that, yeah.
I don't remember what on.
That's where I I can go back and figure out what we.
I don't think we ever said.
What? What was our in? Where are we, I guess, what is Rob's role in this process for the remainder?
After this, then it becomes consultant into the next task that we ask and say. Is the services still needed in a consultant role, depending on how things go with other roles, um, we'll be able to answer that question. Part, I mean, he already met and did the retreat part, so it's just depending on the next step, if there's another project.
Yeah, so that's where do we. Okay, so it's more executive coaching.
Yeah, we we uh. Use Rob as a consultant for the the board retreat, putting together the evaluation.
This package would be kind of completed in terms of helping us put the standards together, the board agreement. But there's still other pieces that could continue.
Did we put executive coaching in your contract?
You did not necessarily, his name, but that that I could pursue executive coaching.
Yeah, right, but that's where I thought we left it to you.
Yes.
To say, do I, you know, am I gonna need one of these to figure out the Oregon system, am I not? It was just come in, take the lay of the land and decide.
That just was very general. That's why I was saying for each thing, we might have another conversation that we need then for another event task.
But simultaneously, while you were asking for that, which was your right to choose, Rob was pushing you and me to hire him. Because he wanted to offer that as an additional paid service. And you and I said, well, we'll let him decide that when she gets here, that's all I think.
I. I just, the whole, this whole process, it would, as a, from a board standpoint, it would be nice to have the guidance. I think, kind of from start to finish, to better understand this, because, like, she puts in here, um. Like number five, develop the superintendent performance evaluation plan, I thought that's what she was bringing to the board, but it's a day.
So these are just, this is, this is this packet right here, and this is the activities that I say, yes, I've accomplished those when my evaluation comes up. So these are some of the activities that would yield more relationships and communication, so we've developed a student, a superintendent performance evaluation plan. We developed that with Rob. At one of those work sessions, and so that's what we're doing tonight, the goal, and then the next packets and the standards. So instead of all of the standards, because it's usually a full year to evaluate superintendent, we just wanted to shorten that. So there's no way to accomplish all of those, would another superintendent would have twelve months to do, and we're doing July to January. So we decided at the work session to do standard line, which was visit visionary district leadership. Two ethics and professional norms, standard four, which was the instructional leadership and improvement. And standard five, which was communication and community relations, so those would be despite the the. The selective view that you chose. Yep, one, two, four, and five, along with the additional goal and strategies that I brought to you on on the separate page. So all of those pieces together would basically be. The performance evaluation from July fifteenth to January.
Okay, it's the majority of these you've already done in the first few days, that's why I'm, that's why I'm, so.
Yes, ma'am, she's very ambitious.
So are you just gonna?
I I I I have to, because I only have a short amount of time, not twelve months, like. Some would have, yeah. So I'm trying to figure out what's reasonable to be able to get accomplished and then, yeah, do my very best to to make it happen. We have a motion.
My chair, I move to adopt the superintendent evaluation timeline in bold, as mentioned.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five superintendent goals and evaluation timeline amended, and we have a second on that as well. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All opposed? Uh, three point six board goals timeline, Mr..
Here.
It's your turn.
All right, um, so another item coming out of the work sessions, the many work sessions we did uh in in August. Was to retool our board goals timeline, uh traditionally, we've done, set those board goals at the July retreat. I think the point was made, and I believe it's a really good move, is when we set our goals in July. The budget has already been set the past spring, um, so the suggestion was made, could we align our board goals? So we're setting board goals right before we set the budget in late winter, early spring, so. I made a handout that I don't like, uh, since I, so this is in your, in your packet, and what it is, is it's got, uh. We also wanted to show you guys how the superintendent goals and superintendent timeline, valuation timeline. Align with the board goals, uh, so you have this handout in your packet. Um, the yellow items are what we change on our board goals timeline, you guys will still set the goals. It'll just be right before we budget, so therefore we can align the budget better to what the board's priorities are and the board's goals. So I have this overly complicated handout uh in your uh in your packet that I don't like, so I made a quick just. Uh, bare bones, so in the fall, so this fall, um, the schools, the district and the board will collect information from stakeholders. Both formally and informally, so we'll do student listening sessions, parent listening sessions. Uh, the the board, as you know, this timeline now, you can informally, as you te- uh talk with people, think about what priorities you're hearing. Heard C T E tonight, for example. Uh, in the winter, we'll compile all that feedback, uh, it looks like I've got it on the um December board meeting, we'd get together. We'd share all the input we've got and have kind of a a time to share what the priorities are and elaborately set those goals. Uh, and then uh in the spring, Anna would then have that budget, and she starts working on the budget before the spring. But she would have the board's goals based on the priorities from uh stakeholders to then align the budget better to the board priorities.
So Joel, on all of these, it's school-based student and family listening sessions, are you going to have community listening sessions for non-school-based?
Oh, yeah. Well, let's look in November and October, board members informally gather input for board goals in November. Uh, we say encourage public comment, comment regarding upcoming board goals, so we can publicize, hey. We wanna hear public comments from people on what what their part. we want to hear public comments from people on what what their parties are, what they're hearing. Uh, and then we also could build in some community listening sessions. I know we did four of those last year. Um, that would be an easy addition to all of this. If that's something the board's interested in.
I think the community listening sessions are structured than us in formally gathering goals we hear in the community. I think
Yeah.
Opportunity for community members that aren't school-based.
Yeah, certainly. And we want both, because I use of board members as as I've heard over and over again are, you you listen to your constituents and taxpayers. You guys have conversations in an informal way to get gather input in the as well. So I think attacking that with both formal and informal uh makes a lot of sense.
So where are we actually sitting down to put goals together?
So if you look at the um in December, the December ninth board meeting, uh, we would uh get all the input and establish those goals. In January, we'd present the first draft of goals, discuss and revise. And then in February, we would adopt the formal ones. And then in March, Anna starts the budget process. So it flowed right into the budget.
So is the board retreat where we usually establish those goals is gone?
The board retreat, uh, I believe you potentially wanted this was uh, we we did our work with Rob Hess. And then we said, let's align the budget more with the board priorities. So shifting the timeline, we can shift. If if we believe we'll need more than just a a board meeting agenda topic, we could do like a January, a December, or January.
No, well, you don't understand my question, Joel. Where on this timeline?
Yeah.
Very pretty.
Yeah.
But where do we actually sit down and look each other in the eye and say, I like your idea, Cheyenne, but I don't like Steve's?
I think it says, I believe up to December ninth board meeting.
That doesn't work. So meetings are full of business.
Yeah, so we could set uh a December. I know we like to spend time together, so we could do a December. If if you're asking for another board work session. Yeah, we could definitely do.
Hand it over to staff and say, hand us our allegedly board goal.
Yeah, I think what we could do is after the December board meeting, as we consolidate all that information, then we could do a work session to really kind of hammer out the actual goals. Um, we could definitely schedule that.
Can we do a board meeting at like one P M? So.
These things usually around a six hour uh. Hey, I'm just trying to save you time.
But they're really important. I mean, that is one of the most important discussions we have all year. That really sets the tone for the rest of the year. And honestly, I don't know where you're gonna fit it in between Thanksgiving and no school November and Christmas.
Yeah.
But uh.
I'm thinking uh it's definitely.
It does to happen.
Certainly, and and it breaks the mold from what we've traditionally done, right? It's normally been a July thing, uh, and and I think the board wanted to say. Yeah, we want to shift the, so we just have to figure out how we want to do that. So either December or a January board work session.
That's fine. I'm just encouraging you to commit and write it down.
I'm gonna commit to scheduling a January work session with this board.
Where do you want, December? I don't know. You tell me is your timeline. You're pretty jerked.
Let's go, let's go January. Let's get out of the holidays and December we'll accumulate all the information. And then in January, we can sit down and and hammer out some clear goals and then potentially adopt it at the January board meeting. Because then Anna will have the information as we move into February. We're sorry. I'm ahead of, I'm ahead of schedule. In January, we'll do it, and then we'll formally adopt the plan in February, at the February board meeting. So this plan will work, and we'll just add a January work session.
Before the board meeting?
Uh, we'll do it. Yeah.
Okay.
Early January. We'll be coming off the holidays. We'll all be in good spirits. And uh we'll.
Okay.
All right, so uh we'll add a January work session to this uh and get rolling on the new timeline. One other important note, just in case you're wondering, uh, we still have our current strategic plan that we uh want to report on. So the board's informed, so we'll continue to report those after each trimester until the new plan is made. So that'll be an update probably in December to January. We'll uh, we'll get something out soon. I'm getting that date locked in.
We have a new date for OSBA.
Dates, so we can.
I didn't get that then.
I'll resend it to you. Okay, Joel, did you finish up board timelines?
Board timelines. Are you ready for policy I I A R?
No, I think we have three point seven first.
Oh, sorry.
That is very important because it goes back to the goal that we used to.
Apple Fest.
It's our October culture event.
I don't even know if we need. But we not having. I think Tammy, were you gonna print off the sign up sheet?
Yep, yep.
So that's all it is, is that our October um staff district office um and school event is called Apple Fest. So think of nacho bar except with apples. So Tammy's gonna come around. You are awesome to the core. Grant and I are hosting, um, or we are organizing. And we are gonna do that during conferences for most buildings. And so you'll see that many buildings are just are areas have different times. It may not all, they may not work for you, or they may work for you. So sign up for one. We'd love to have you there. Your main responsibility when you are gonna be there is going to be cutting apples. Yes, so you're not gonna be scooping ice cream. Yes. Yes, this time you'll be cutting apples, so or a deconstructed caramel apple. You can think of it that way too. And teachers and staff will have toppings that they can then do that. So towards the end of October.
I think everyone is awesome to the core. So let's start off the thing we serve them.
So we guys put our names on this?
Yep. Or I can put your name on there. Scott's doing every day. It looks like that's what he's signing up for. We'll sign you up. And if you have any extra, you know, apple toppings at home.
Helping us out.
Yeah.
We're organizing that. We're spreading the load. Really? Feeling how I can go and that's when. Okay. All right, so I'm carrying, doing all things. Okay, so four point oh, policy update. Um, four point one. Oh, Dr. Hock.
This should be a quick one. Um, so the board asked that we uh look to a policy language to add um placing the syllabi online at the beginning of every trimester. So you've got uh just one quick revision in blue there. We added in policy I I A A R. Uh, under two D, all core syllabi will be provided to families and posted to school websites at the beginning of each grade period. As you guys think about that, big shout out to Mr. Eric Ryan and his team. Got all our syllabes are live online now. So that that has been done.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion. Do we have a second? Okay.
He said, just say yes.
Okay, so just to catch you up really quick, we're multitasking here. Um, we're signing up for Apple Fest and then um Dr. Hock just told us that this policy. Um, we have a motion on the table and a second to approve the way it is amended. Any discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
Of the way staff was treated because they were following policy and to have us add it now to make it do what they were asked to do. Again, they were not treated well at the last meeting. They were following policy. And they got, I more or less got accused of not. But I just wanted to point that out, that they were following policy for all the parties involved. So I want, so I'm all for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any more discussion? Okay, uh, so the motion is to approve this policy. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Thank you. When are you in Brothers for Apple Fest? Late in time.
You were gonna be gone that week.
I'm not just going that way, so probably the week.
Um, principals were asked to put on the date and time on that one, so Jim was asked and um and she's gonna, we're asked, so they had, I don't, I didn't check this afternoon. Can't wait to see if that had been updated. Um, so we can reach out once those dates have been added and and see who can volunteer up the states.
Okay, we're at five point oh, finance report. Ms. Hannah? All yours. So this month, as I've been telling for a couple of months, you get a a different version of a finance report. It's an annual version of the finance report rather than the monthly projections that I normally give you. Um, it's just a good time to give you some annual information because we're really between fiscal years right now. We've not closed out the last fiscal year. And we're too early in the new fiscal year to do any kind of projections until we do our first September table. Uh, so the information that I'm giving you, um, it really doesn't change more than once a year, so that um it, uh, that's, that is why I call it annual. So there's just a bunch of graphs and a bunch of just um information that is that I feel like is important for you just to know and be aware of. Um, so I just have some highlights for each of the graphs to to tell you about. Uh, the first one is future debt obligations, and this is all of the debt that the district has right now. When I first came to work here over twelve years ago, there were a lot more lines on this graph because we had a lot more debt. And as we had the opportunity, we prepaid debt and eliminated debt and in turn eliminated interest costs for the district. Um, these that are remaining on here are bonds, and those are um not something you can just go out and refinance easily. So they generally stay on your books and unless there's a a good opportunity that arises and you go through an underwriter and you reissue the bonds at that time. So there's three of them on here. Um, they're all, there's two kinds. There's one is a general obligation bond, and that is the one that we cast in two thousand thirteen. And that um pays for Barnes Elementary and all of the um renovations and things that we did back then. The second one is pension obligation bonds, or sometimes I call them PERS bonds, and those are the ones that drop off in twenty twenty-eight. Um, the thing that will be great when that happens is we will no longer have that debt payment. The thing that will not be great is the savings that we get in the PERS rates will also go away. And that could be pretty detrimental, which is why we have a PERS reserve. Uh, so sometime between now and twenty thirty-eight, or sorry, twenty twenty-eight. Um, we will probably look at doing additional PERS bonds, and it's gonna be very complicated. It's gonna be uh it's a lot, it it's gonna be like a lot of money and a big risk. Um, this last one that we did, we have saved over ten million dollars in PERS costs by doing this. Um, so all of the districts are starting to meet and talk about that this is imminent and how do we want to approach this? So I'll keep you updated. Um. My next one is the projected bond tax rate. And this is the property tax rate that's outside of the general property tax rate. It's the second one that's the bond, just for bonds. And it um is projected to decrease and then end as that debt gets paid. Currently, uh, you'll see that it's, it's just steadily decreasing. Um, it's about I think it's sixty-two cents right now, and it'll eventually go down to forty something, forty-eight cents, something like that, which is the lowest in the region. The next one is the general fund balance history. This is where the general fund balance ends up every year. And when we talk in during budget season, I will mention that we budget for a certain ending fund balance, but we usually come in better. And this graph shows that. The budget is blue, the actual is green. The next one is the state revenue history, and it just shows, actually, that's two, our state revenue history, and it talks about the state school fund. Uh, the top graph is the dollars for state school fund, which are a total amount of money that comes in, and you can see the steep steady increase that has happened since the recession. The second graph is the same exact information, but it's just on a per student or an A B M basis. Then there's some new things that we didn't see last year when I gave this to you, and Mr. Cooper asked for some more information, which um is something that gives me joy and affirms my work, so thank you for that. And I added even more because uh I was so excited. Um, he asked for, I believe, Scott, you asked for, maybe it was federal force fees and student information account. Um, I also added the heavy equipment rental tax because that came up last month. Um, so I just wanted to show you, and and that's very fairly new. It started in two thousand nineteen, so um it'll take some years before we start seeing any kind of trending um with that. Uh, that's basically just miscellaneous revenue. It doesn't flow through the state school fund. The second one is a student investment account, and that's um also relatively new. It started in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And that is mostly funded by the corporate activity tax. And that has steadily increased. Um, but just know that the future funding for that is it's just as guaranteed as any other kind of state funding where it's basically guaranteed, but any legislative session could change something. Um, this student investment account has very specific uses that are restricted. Um, things like reducing class sizes, um, mental health and safety for students, and re- uh, increasing instructional time. So we use it for those purposes. The next one is the common school fund, and that one is a statewide rev- revenue source that comes from the Department of State Lands. And basically, Oregon owns a lot of land and generates revenue from that land by either leasing, selling, or using um state-owned land and water, waterways. And so that that fund generates income um and then is distributed to school districts on an A B N W basis. We don't have any control over it. It just shows up and you record it. We really don't even have a good way to project. And then the next one is federal forest fees. This one is very difficult to get info on, like, what's it going to be? You know, how did they decide? Um, but basically, the Forest Service funds uh that are generated at a national level are distributed to all the different counties throughout all the different states. And then the counties keep a portion of it and pass through twenty-five percent of the schools. So you can see that one has just steadily declined over the years as forest fee revenue has declined in fashion. That no longer flows through the state school fund, so that's just extra revenue for us now. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Anna, on the graph you have for the general fund ending balance history, is this where we would see? Like you said, in twenty-one, the last thing was like twenty-one, twenty-two, there was a million dollars in savings, and then twenty-three, twenty-four. There was a million dollars in savings. So is that reflected in this graph?
Partially, yes. I feel like I need to give you a really good, long explanation of that, and I started to build that, and I'm hoping that at some point we'll have a way for me to give you some financial uh explanations of things, maybe in a work session or maybe during budget or something. But I started to build some ways to explain those things. I've been saying that I'm just not explaining well enough with words, make pictures and then you'll.
If you're up for a challenge, I'm sure I would really like to see would show where we are with the equalization formula of the common school fund versus where we would be with just property tax revenue. And what that is projected to do as the data centers come online. Are we at a point where we become a net contributor rather than a net recipient of the equalization fund? When do we cross that line? The Shute County has already crossed it. I don't know if we're there or not.
There will come a point where we cross that line.
Yeah, and I'd love to see the projection for when that's what happens. This will take some guessing.
I have um great friends at City who helped me out with this, and we've actually looked at this information, so.
Be helpful to know it, and I think it would help maybe get some better understanding at the table about how the equalization formula works and why it is gonna be our end.
I don't think it's gonna be our end. I think we'll be able to be on our own.
They don't have their choice. We're not allowed to unless we we're Californian. We're not allowed to unless we we're Californian.
I can provide data. Yes, you can. Thank you, John. Okay. Um, Anna, you're still up. Five point two for modular building expenditure. Okay. We mentioned this in a previous board meeting, um, and I actually mentioned this to the board in August of twenty twenty three that the modular, that the lease would be expiring around this time, around September of twenty twenty four, and that we needed to make plans for that. And so we set aside some money from um excess general fund and the fund balance and moved it into the maintenance reserve so that when the time came, we would be ready. So now we uh have a bunch of information for you that we have prepared. Um, so these ends in September, as I mentioned, am I speaking?
This is mine.
This is yours.
It was my slide. You go for it, Anna. Yes. All right. So current status, um, while we're having this conversation is because the lease ends in September. And uh, so I'm I was asked to kind of give some background information on the mods, um, how they're utilized, how many students are in them, and then as well as um if uh, at the end of the lease, depending on options, what that would do to the middle school, the systems, uh, the setup, the layout of the middle school. So um, at every, any point in the day, every period, there's on average eighty students in the mods. So within the mods, there's six modulators and s- or excuse me, three modulators and six classrooms. In the classrooms, there are four, four full-time uh core classroom teachers. We have two seventh grade math teachers, uh, sixth grade social studies, and a sixth grade language arts teacher. We have a robotics classroom in one of them, and then we have a technology workspace in the last one. Uh, moving forward, something that uh is really important to mention that Anna and I were talking a lot about is our current fifth grade cohort in the district is the largest in the district by an uh an extra thirty students. Um, the current sixth grade is a extremely large group. It's the second biggest cohort. And so with those two classes coming into the middle school, um, next year, CCMS's projected numbers are going to go up by seventy five students because of the the smaller eighth grade group leaving, which is, I think, about a hundred and eighty, and then that fifth grade group coming in is uh two, I think you had it. Anyways, our our numbers would go up to seven, seven oh five. So with the small eighth grade leaving and then another big group coming in, our numbers would be bumping um pretty heavily, and it would put some strain on some systems. Sure.
Okay, so we have obviously multiple options, but we we're not stuck just with one option. Um, the first option would be to completely have the mods removed. We don't own them. We're just leasing them, and we could remove them. The cost to that would be somewhere between se- seventy five thousand to ninety thousand dollars totally, if that that's for all three together. Um, it would be a one-time cost. Uh, the only benefit to this option is that out of all the options, this is the largest cost savings option.
So um, in terms of the drawbacks with removing the mods, there are a lot of drawbacks to having these removed from the middle school. Um, like I mentioned, the student population, the next two years are going to be bumping up quite a bit, and that's going to put a lot of strain on on some systems, some programs. Uh, if they were to be removed, it would shut down programs, which are definitely a district priority. You've mentioned some of the CTE conversations that uh were going on tonight that um unfortunately, those are some of the extra spaces that we have in the building that are utilized for robotics and engineering, and um those are the spaces that would then have to be turned into a full-time gen ed classroom. Uh, we would lose behavior support, ISS, and our online learning hub space because those are some of the spinoffs to where um finding space for those six people uh that are in the mods and putting them into the building, i- it we would lose those. We would have a loss of performing arts space. By doing that, we would, or because of that, um, our band and our choir teachers would have to combine and use the same space. We have shared staff at the high school, and they have alternating schedules, but at this point, um, they'd have to have the use the same space. We would lose some special education space. That, those are some of the classrooms that have the small intervention spaces, um, where there's small groups, smaller classes, and to fit a seventh grade math teacher, we need to take up our our bigger classrooms and then push the special ed spaces into some smaller spaces around the building. Um, in that, we would lose our staff room. And by doing this, we would be el- in eliminating our engineering course because those are elective spaces that need to be condensed. We would lose robotics courses and then displacement of r- our reading intervention space. So with some of the trickle effect, we'd have to bump some of those smaller classes like I mentioned. Um, even kicking things around with the with our map is um some intervention spaces would have to be used in the library, which potentially would um take some library time away from kids, which I know is is not what we know is best for students. There would be a lot of disruption to students if this were were to happen because um school year started, and if we were to move that direction, then um at some point here in the next time, we'd have to um change schedules, um, take away some electives, uh redo some scheduling with with teachers and um through the front office, and then that would change on the students' end. Uh, this transition uh maintenance costs, Leland, if you want to kind of talk about those two bullet points there. Okay, next slide, perfect. So I think uh we're kind of good on that. Option B.
So the second, uh Marcus, what did you do with all of these things prior to how? How long have you had the mods there?
We have had the mods since, so, five years.
And then you offer.
No. We have not offered these. Um, so a lot of the the, so Action Lab, robotics, engineering, those are pieces that we've been adding. There are a lot of through through some of the the meta grants, some of the work that uh Ryan Cochrane and um Jim Crouch have been bringing into the middle school. So those all have been additions with that extra space.
The last one. I thought the modulars were brought in for extra space during COVID, so all kids could attend on the blue and gold days. So did you add these programs with COVID?
No, so part of, part of that and some of that, we had, there are class spaces that aren't classroom spaces that are roughly ten feet by twenty feet that I would then have to turn into a classroom into some of our behavior space, some of our intervention spaces that um traditionally haven't been used as classrooms.
So where was your behavior support ISS online her learning hub pre-COVID?
We didn't have those pre-COVID. We didn't have those behavior programs necessarily like we do now.
We didn't have ISS pre-COVID.
We had ISS, yes. And that was in conference room next to the office.
Did you have performing arts before COVID? Were you added that with the modulars?
We've had those. And that's where some of the extra spaces are, the the engineering space, uh, behavior program, Action Lab, robotics, are those are the new spaces. New electives in classes and offerings that we have had.
We remodeled that choir room during COVID, so we could have a class.
My second option is to continue leasing the mods. Um, we don't actually know for sure what the price will be. We have talked to the vendor about that, and they said it will be more than what they're paying now, but there's, they're not really, they're not giving us a price, is that?
Between those two, between those two costs.
Um, and so that just depends on how many years we were, we would um continue to lease, but that's the annual cost that that would be to continue to lease them. The benefits obviously are to, we'd be able to keep the programs that are currently in place and the courses, and we also, as I mentioned, we set money aside to be able to do any of these options, and so we can do this because we have the money set aside up to a certain, you know, depends on how many years you would want to do it, but so those are benefits.
Do they have a timeline on how long we could lease?
It would be a month to month lease.
Well, at least at least six months. So that's the very minimum they would lease it, but they would be willing to negotiate however long a lease we would want.
Two years or.
Two or three years, yeah. And we could set our price. Once we actually lock the lease in, we could set our monthly cost, yeah.
Can we lease to own?
No.
I mean, do they really want to back if we lease another six years?
So Will Scott, the company that bought modern building, who used to build them and sell them and lease them and everything, they don't sell, they don't sell mods. Their business is to build them and lease them. And and those are their assets, so there's no guarantee that they would would let us buy them at a later date. They might, they might not. Right now, they're fine with it, but but as the market changes, they could say, no, we want that asset back and we'll get somebody else. And they're in great condition, so they're they're a good asset.
So that's really the last uh bottom drawback there, but then there's some others that when you lease, you it's just money out the door. You don't own anything at the end. Um, there's a sense for staff and students that you don't know how long these buildings are going to be here, or how long these programs or courses are going to be here um if we don't have the space, and then not knowing your future costs is is a drawback as well. So the last option up here is if we purchase the modulars, um, the cost on that we know is six hundred sixty thousand dollars. It's a one-time cost. Um, they're already in place, so there's no additional installation or infrastructure or utilities or anything. Um, it's just a big hit and that. Benefits are again, same same as option B, we have the ability to keep the current programs and force offering offerings. Also, we have the funds set aside to do this. If we own them, and eventually we do something with CCMS where we either completely remodel or we tear it down or we build a new middle school or something. We own these mods. You can, we can move them to wherever we need them in the district. It could be future classrooms somewhere else or whatever you needed them to be. They're, they were built brand new for us, so they're they're in really good condition. Um, these are some of the nice, these are the nicest classrooms probably that we have in the district.
Nice, definitely nicest classrooms in the middle school.
At the middle school very much with the classroom temperatures at seventy nine this week, um, and those were very nice to visit. I will say that.
And they have restrooms.
Yeah.
And the drawback on this is that it's the largest immediate cost. So with any of these options, the amount of money that we set aside for this, we will save money that will be repurposed in the maintenance reserve towards other projects.
So there'll be three hundred, uh, three hundred thousand dollars left.
I went back and looked, and we actually set aside one point nine million dollars.
And so those came from the ESTR funds?
The one point nine?
Yeah.
No, that came from general fund. Out of the general fund into the maintenance reserve in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. So, um, what's that?
When you bought them?
No, when we closed out the fiscal year for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we had incredible unusual savings because we had tons of positions that we could not fill, which was horrible for staff, but great for the bottom line. So um we were able to set aside money. We knew that this was going to be a problem. And when you can look down the future and see this is a future problem and you can solve it today, that's what we tried to do. So we set aside that money, having no idea how much it was going to cost, and um hopefully the vendor didn't see how much we set aside. Yeah, they gave us this price, um, and Leland has verified that this is a fair, this is a fair market value price. Um, and so that's, that's how we set that money aside and it, the reason why we put it in the ma- maintenance reserve, because then we knew we're overestimating, and we need money in the maintenance reserve anyway. We always need more money in the maintenance reserve than what we have in the maintenance reserve. So anytime we have an excess job fund balance, we try to put money into the maintenance reserve. We need four million dollars a year just to do maintenance in the maintenance reserve, and we only have two million. So anytime we have extra money, we set it aside in there, and so that's what the remainder of that one point nine million could be used for with any of these options, and it'll just naturally happen because Leland has access to that maintenance reserve and uses it and plans for it.
We could use it for a brick and mortar building to remodel.
We could do some remodeling. There's, there's some big items that we could take care of. I mean, um, the the mil- some of the things that that are right there right now is the middle school boiler, the boiler number two is down. It needs to be welded.
This is my concern is that we don't really put all the options on the table. Like, have we talked to the city and county about land swaps? Have we talked about moving the middle school to the high school and building a new high school? Like every time I hear like, it's just, it's a maintenance nightmare. It it's a maintenance nightmare like the middle school. And so when we kind of, we have bonds continually come to us like forty four million dollars and repairing a building like that's not really repairable, we're not it is just frustrating as a business owner and somebody who runs businesses to to look at the way that the district and like the there, there's other options that we have, and so just running bonds and stuff for the same thing and maintenance and things like that. I think you've done a really good job, but we need to think outside the box. We need to do things differently than we've been doing them. And we need to sit down, like Scott said, we need to sit down at the table with the city and the county and the tax law office and really look at what what is our future? Are are we really going to keep the kids at that middle school and continue to patch the roofs and add on all these modulars? Are we going to look at like what else we can do to have food facilities? You know, and and build new.
That's exactly what the bond committee that we got rid of in July would have done. That was the purpose of the bond.
What were they going to do at the middle school?
Long-term planning for facilities and figuring out how to pay for it.
I know we need some time, like we need to sit with the city. We need to look at the abatement roll-offs. We need to look at all those things. And I mean, for me, like, you know, we we do need stuff for our kids and programs. It's like, how much money do we dump into the middle school, and when do we really look at pulling the trigger and running like a really solid bond?
That's, um, well, first of all, I would say we have run two solid bonds that the voters did not like. But that's the idea of a bond is you're bringing forward your needs, which you've done all your work on. We've created the facilities plans multiple times, and then you present your greatest need to your voters, and your voters decide whether they want to afford that or not, or in that process, before it gets to the voters, you can also say we have this alternative funding strategy, which we've done a couple of times. Like Pioneer was originally in a bond, but then it got pulled off because we found a better way to pay for it. HVAC was originally in a bond, but it got pulled off. We found a better way to pay for it. We still have seventy million dollars in deferred maintenance at this point that we've got to deal with at some point before you even get to shiny new things, like a new middle school, a new gym, whatever.
Some of the things should have been replaced in nineteen seventy seven, and that's something that Leland inherited.
Like I didn't, we, how we didn't fix some of those things like before we built Pioneer or did things like it it just seems like it's kind of grasping at straws.
So that
It's frustrating.
But big things at the middle school are very difficult to try and do out of that a reserve or the general fund. Because we're talking about the the middle school HVAC system alone to upgrade it the way it should be would be seven and a half to eight million dollars approximately.
And the last bond that we put into building a middle school, have we sat down and talked with the city to see what our options are, the money?
We've got to build a new middle school because the cost of building the middle school is beyond what anybody thought anybody would support. I mean, a new middle school is going to cost you, depending on what kind of school you build, between sixty and eighty million dollars. And nobody's going to vote for that bond, we didn't think.
Yeah, why have we paid in lease payments over the last five years for these three buildings?
Three years.
We've only had.
We've only had them for three years, yeah.
And while Anna's, um, so I, this is my sixth year at the middle school, and since I've been here, we've added a robotics classroom. We've added um additional speech, a speech classroom. We added an FTE for sixth grade social studies. Previously, there had only been one social studies teacher. We've added one special ed teacher, and then we also added the Action Lab. So those are, those are the the adds since I've been at the middle school.
What are the lease payments for the last three years?
Two hundred forty two thousand.
Over three years?
Hmm, and that's, that was all paid for with ESTR.
So this and the ESTR funds, the three hundred
So this and the S R funds, the three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five for C C M S modular buildings. It says C C M S classrooms were sized inconsistently and in order to operate in-person instruction, we had to have a certain amount of square feet. Per student in each classroom. So the modular buildings allowed classes to occur in person and solve some space issues we're having due to growth. So the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five thousand was that put into each modular? So like a hundred and.
So what I was.
Your S R fund expenditures.
Ah, okay, I forgot about, so this is just, all I did was take the monthly payment times twelve times three. We also did some infrastructure because we had to pay for utilities and we had to build like, uh, what would you call it, ramps?
We had to build, yeah, we built a deck, the utilities, all the systems that go into those, that's some pretty pricey work. And they're all wet, so they're all plumb. Electrical. Fire.
So the, is this forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twelve S R two funds and S R three funds were used together to convert. Or to cover the cost of the modulars at C C M S, is that the maintenance or is that on top of?
The maintenance.
Well, the ramps and all that.
Yeah, the infrastructure stuff, yeah.
So there's another cost for that or?
No, that includes, that's why that's higher than the two hundred forty-three thousand that we gave you.
So is the two hundred forty-three thousand in the three hundred fifty-nine thousand or that's on top of it?
I believe it's in, but I'm not looking at what you're. That's my tentative answer that I can verify for you. Are you just looking at a? Finance report? We do have some more slides we can get through.
Alright, so if we were to move those classes out of there, we would have to wait and do it in December. Um, most likely would have to happen over Christmas break, it'd be the soonest we could do it. Um, we would be able to do it with existing staff. Um, we might, depending on what's going on, if we had a major snowstorm. And had to dedicate all our maintenance staff to a project or shoveling roofs off, we would have to look at hiring the outside help to do that. Um, once we get stuff moved, we're gonna have to actually pay some teachers to come in and reset up their rooms, because there's gonna be some. It's, it, it's gonna be weird moving everybody back into there. Um. One of the things that we try to do over Christmas break and any of the breaks is a lot of preventive maintenance type stuff. That we can't get to when there's students in the classrooms. This would probably stop any of that that we had scheduled to do in December. Um. If we, if we get rid of these mods. And we have to bring them back in in three or four years, we're gonna pay substantially more than what we paid for the ones we just bought. From the ones that we just bought, we didn't custom order those, they were on the lot. And we, we got a deal because they were actually a twenty twenty-three model. So you're looking at a pretty decent price increase, I don't know exactly what it would be. Okay, if we were to buy new ones, I can't project what's.
So why? Because it is, go buy a modular home. You know, you can look like a hundred thousand dollars, maybe we're paying five hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and six hundred thousand dollars. Why are, are there like state stipulations for?
They do have to be certified by the state. Um, or really the only options you get when you order those is. If it's one class, one big classroom, two classrooms, the wall in the middle, uh, bathrooms in each side. And then like the ramps and utilities that come with it, that's the only thing, you can, you can change the, the flooring or wall surfaces, but. Pretty much it. And then the state has to certify all of them, so they're all built mostly in like Almsville, over by Salem. There's like two or three factories right there to build them.
And these ones are just specifically for schools and.
Well, they use them for, I mean, construction companies will buy them and use them and they can easily film around, set up, yeah, they're. You know, their little office on construction site. They make all kinds of mods.
They're just a lot, a lot more expensive than.
They are expensive. Yeah, yeah, you're good. I think I covered everything on a slide, didn't I?
Yeah, okay.
I think I kinda covered this already where we, where's the money coming from, set the money aside into the maintenance reserve. Um, if we, it says if option A or B or C, but really with any of the options, what would we do with the leftover money? Because there will be leftover money depending on, on any of those options. And as I mentioned, it'll just be. Leland can just use it for whatever maintenance he had, he needed to do. Uh, and believe me, he's got a lot when he stays up there, I get to show you his list. Um, every, everything that he has planned out is every roof, every. Every building component for every building in the district planned out and spread over multiple years so that you don't just end up with. Nothing done. However, like I said, some of this stuff should have been replaced, you know.
Yeah, I should, I should show the plan sometime.
Um, so it is, you know, we, Leland's worked here for how many years?
Eight, eight.
Eight years, I've worked here for twelve years to even just gather information about roofs. We have to dig through stuff that people before us did, so, um, we, we've inherited a lot of this. Um, why does the board need to approve this? Uh, according to policy D J, any expenditure over one hundred fifty thousand dollars required for approval. So that just. Brings us to where this comes to the board and just sends the board.
We, we go back to the, 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 just going, going back to leasing. The option B.
Okay.
There you go, that one. So they can come in, if yours is gonna do a month to month, they can come in and, I mean, a year and a half, eighteen months, say, hey, I need those. Your mind, see you later.
I don't think they would do that. I, I mean, it would be, right now it's just month to month, so they can do whatever they want with the cost, till we lock in a lease. So then we would lock in a lease for eighteen months and then as in eighteen months would approach, we would either decide. What are we gonna do with them? They're buy them.
We could lease them for another three years.
Mm-hmm, we could.
For option C, could you move them out to Caldue if we pour down the middle school?
Yeah, we could move anywhere we want.
They're, they're, you can do whatever you want.
It, it's a lot more costly to move one than to buy a new one.
But you can.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure I agree.
Or wait, did I? Yeah, I don't know, did I say that right? It's cheaper than we want.
But once you, so once you lock in, you can lock in a three-year lease.
You could lock in a three-year.
And it'll be in that range of a hundred, hundred twelve thousand.
It's somewhere in there.
Then a third or?
No, that's.
That's totally.
For the three for a year.
The. They told us that the going lease rate's twenty-eight hundred to thirty-one hundred a month. Right now, we're paying twenty-two fifty, so it will go up.
For you.
Pretty much, yeah.
The, the vendor also mentioned that normally they don't sell and a lot of times they're. Corporate will lock down the sale of mods, but right now they're willing to sell to us, so it's not something that comes up all the time. We're recommending option C, that's not obvious, it's in the board package, but that's what we're recommending.
So Anna, how did the funds get moved out of? Like you moved this one point nine million from the general fund to the maintenance reserve. So like Dr. Skinner has mentioned, like she wanted to restructure our literacy. Faculty, however you wanna state that, and create a new position that we didn't have funds for. So out of this one point nine million, can funds be moved out of the maintenance reserve to pay for a literacy teacher?
You could, generally, um. With, when you add a staff member, you kinda consider that a, an ongoing, almost a permanent cost that you pay for every year. And so that's why when you have a one-time windfall or one-time savings, you can't, you can't rely on every year. That's when we do things with it, like put it in the maintenance reserve rather than hiring a staff member. Um, but you could theoretically say, okay, well, we'll take a, a chunk of this money. And, um, pay for three years of a staff person and then. That gives us three years to figure out how we're gonna pay for that, that person happy back. You could do something like that.
Can you just go for one year and then set it in your budget or following year?
As long as the budget can handle it. You may at some point have to cut something else. And you can budget for whatever you want, but you also have to make sure that the money is going to come in.
I'm not the finance person, but when you saw those articles about districts being in really bad financial shape. They did exactly that. They took one-time money and bought a bunch of staff. And then when those mon- when that money ran up, saw fall, you saw all these articles about districts having to shave, you know, lay off. Ten, twenty percent of their staff, so that's why the kind of philosophy of one-time money for one-time purchases is.
Most seriously, they found the money and all the staff are back.
Some districts, yeah, so, some districts did, some districts.
Seems like there's always. Like I've heard Scott for the last three years asked for maybe longer, I don't know, a music teacher alignment. In three years, we couldn't have budgeted for a music teacher because the greatest way to raise scores for reading and math is. Music and the arts, like that's just.
Sometimes the problem isn't, it's not a budget problem, there's other underlying things. Like, for example, we budgeted for a medical counselor last year and could hire one.
Have we budgeted for a music teacher?
That was the initial thing that happened, that's.
And then it just. They're always like, I come to find out, we, we had one point nine million dollars set aside and then we had like the crying about the roof at the middle school. It just seems like everything is like the sky is falling, the sky is falling, the sky is falling, oh, we have money. So it just seems. It just seems the way it's presented sometimes is misleading.
I'm sorry for that. When we set aside one point nine million dollars, we thought that we were gonna need it for that purpose. Just like Steve Forrester said, you don't wanna spend it before you, you know, now that we know it's not gonna cost one point nine million dollars. We can use that money for something else. But at the time, we didn't know how much it was going to be and. We, all we could do is use estimates at that time.
So Leland, where do we get the, how do we come to the pricing? Because we bought two modulars, one that crooked or the one at Barnes Butte. They were each half a million a piece, so we allocated a million already towards modulars. And half a million was a steal at that. So did they depreciate in three years that much to two twenty each?
So the, the building itself, like Barnes Butte, is pretty similar to what these are. So the building itself, without any utilities or anything, extra carpet and any of those kinda things. I think it was like two, two sixty-five for that one. The other one was two forty, because it's, it's dry. I think that's where I was at. So a new, a new one that was on the lot, a year old, was two hundred and sixty thousand. But then when we added all the utilities and all the site work and everything we had to do to that, that's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work. And I think we'll be under budget, so it's probably not gonna be completely that much money for the, for the site work, but what's that?
How many buildings?
How many bids do we get? We have to get three. And this project, this is preventing wage project, so. Uh, yeah, we got three, we didn't issue R and Ps, we just kinda did invitation for bids. For each of the sub, each of the subs, because the district serves as a general contractor.
I'm trying to move to approve personally the existing modulars from buildings at C C M S.
All right, we have a motion on the table for option C to purchase the mods for the one-time cost of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we have a second on the table. Is there discussion? Do we have discussion?
I, I wanna just mention in discussion, I wasn't sure I wanted to do this after the last meeting. Then Anna Hall being in her office and Keel Hall being, so.
You got Hall being?
But more importantly, the, I know there are at least three modulars in Pal Butte that are on their last legs. They're gonna leave the place. If we buy these now, and then later we decide to do something different with a middle school or whatever, we already have a place to do it. That's crying out for. So it seems to me like buying them now is just an investment in the future for what we'll have to spend anyway. So that's why I'm suddenly supporting.
I think I'd rather look at the leasing options and meet with the city and county and see what. Those funds look like and how everyone can partner together. That doesn't lock us in, but it would buy us time to see if the money comes into our hands in twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-eight, twenty-third, whatever, all those years Steve. Named off or abatement. Have a high probability of coming in, because we know we could utilize. You know, that one point nine million.
So with that being said, Leland. The option B, like Jessica was stating. Um, if you lock us into another three years, that would be twenty twenty-seven-ish.
Right. Yeah.
Which don't.
Still probably cheaper though, if we're moving out to Pal Butte, miss goodbye him. Now, but then you just said that, well, first you said, I don't know who said it, somebody said, oh, well, we can move them anywhere we want. And then you said it's more expensive to move them.
No, I was wrong. I had that backwards. I said it's more costly, it's less expensive. So I was, I was wrong. It's cheaper to move them than to buy a new one, quite a bit, yeah. Yeah.
But if we purchased them now, we wouldn't just move them out to Pal Butte. I mean, because I, we're running into that whole space issue. Correct.
I would just love to see all the options that we've tabled to see where partnerships could be. Because we know six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, we put. If, if the two hundred forty-three thousand goes into them, we've already put four hundred thousand into them, so we're at a million there. We just spent a million on two other modulars. I mean, you're halfway at the purchase price of that proposal right there, and then we have another. What, nine hundred thousand? I mean, you're, you're three fourths the way to purchasing a brick and mortar that we just don't know enough about. And the degrees of what it would take to get up to par, so.
Well, and that's one of the reasons it's like, if we could get Grizzly Mountain and Nutrition Services and all that moved up on the hill, then you open up Steen's Pillar for a K eight. You alleviate the middle school. Yeah, I mean, there, there's so many options besides the modulars, modulars, modulars everywhere.
What do you mean, what do you mean from the middle school?
So if you make Steen's Pillar a K eight and you have a K eight up out of Cal Butte, not all those kids feed into, or it's into the middle school. So you're alleviating that, plus you have Grizzly Mountain with the middle school, then you do dual enrollment. So a lot of those homeschool, a lot of families, I mean. A lot of families would like to see a dual enrollment option and go to. I mean, I know a lot of homeschool families that will just take their kids to the middle school, they don't do Grizzly Mountain, but they'll drop them off there for, you know, just a couple of classes.
We do, we do.
So it just seems like nobody can like think outside the box and we don't have all the options on the table. So it's just always money, 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 the sky is falling. And we haven't sat down at the table with everybody to really discuss the options, we just bring it out in public. And we don't even, I mean, the last modular thing, I was like getting hit with a wet fish, because I didn't have any private meetings before to know that was coming. You know, the one at, um, Steen's Pillar, the first set of modulars that we voted on.
Oh, the Barnes.
Yeah, the modulars, yeah. So I don't know, I'm with Jessica on this, that I wanna wait and see all the options. Um, of what we have, because we're always like, oh, we have no money for a brick and mortar. And you just said in this that it's just absolutely ludicrous to be throwing money away at a lease. Well, you've been doing that for twenty years with the district office. When, and so I'm like, it just doesn't make sense to me. Like to, to not look at like all the, the space issues and it's so much better to have. A brick and mortar space than it is to just continue to grow. I'm not.
Usually questions?
All new question.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Okay, so the motion on the table is currently option C. We have a second. Now we're going to vote. Alright, all those in favor of option C, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, raise your hand, say nay. Okay, moving on to six point O of the comments. Okay, let me go fast. You wish to make a public comment, please complete a comment part started to start of public comments. If you're viewing online, please indicate you would like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name and any group you're representing. Uh, keep your comments to no more than four minutes. A group of visitors with a common purpose, she doesn't need a spokesperson for the group. You wish to request that the board consider an agenda item, please contact superintendent, we spoke with prior to the next board meeting. And the board does not hear complaints against any personnel in open session. If you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent or the board chair. Okay, here we are. Um, Mary. I'm sorry, but I did not wanna butcher your last name. Thank you. I wasn't a hundred percent.
Thank you. Um, I did not write this, but I have the man's permission to read it, who did write it. My rant for the day, an issue I have ranted about in the past and have been called heartless for doing so. I haven't changed my mind. School districts all over the place seem to be in a, in a competition to see which ones. Can distribute the most free stuff as the school year begins. Make no mistake. I one hundred percent support for providing free meals. Excuse me, to students whose families simply cannot afford to, to give them healthy meals prior to the start of the school day. And the same goes for free lunches at school. However, why? Should taxpayers foot the bill for free breakfast and lunches for all students? Which include the majority whose families can easily afford to provide those meals. Not only can they afford it, but they have a responsibility to provide for their own children. That is not my responsibility. As a taxpayer. But now in many school districts, free meals are not enough. Now we see every student, regardless of financial need, receiving free backpacks filled with school supplies. You know what that really results in? An entitlement mentality. And down the road, an excuse for those students who go to college believing that their student loan debt should be paid by, be paid for by others. The government, taxpayers, not them. Yep, let's all rely on the government for everything. Actually, let's rely on the decreasing number of taxpayers. Who are forced to pay for what others should be paying for. The nanny state, AKA socialism, has arrived in full force and school districts are complicit in that. And I totally agree. This was written by Jerry Boyd.
Thank you. Um, Jack?
What was school board meeting without Jack Raven breaking down? And I'm not looking for an answer, but as, as everybody is, I'm sure aware. Um, the state projects. Overpayment of, or over collection of tax dollars again this year. Last year, we got a kicker. This year, they're predicting, projecting another kicker. Um, I'm told, alright, I've been led to believe that uh, the schools um. Received the benefit of the, what's called the business kicker. So I'd like to know what, what that's projected to be based on what we should have gotten last year in that. What I really wanted to address uh, tonight is, um, I'd like to offer. An appreciation comment to our teachers. Obviously, we're starting a new school year. Um, I, I think our teachers don't get enough recognition or expression of gratitude. And I think we need to. As, as the, as the public, I'm, I'm constantly amazed or. Maybe I shouldn't be amazed, but I'm disappointed that I don't see more school teachers that attend. Uh, the school board meeting to see how the sausage is made that creates uh, the environment in which they uh, work. But as a, because my curiosity has been piqued over the last few years with regards to. Uh, what our teachers are being taught to teach. Uh, done a little research. In twenty twenty two. Two hundred and seventy four thousand, four hundred and fifty or six point seven percent of college graduates. Earned education degrees. This is according to U S data collected. A total of eight, eighty nine thousand, four hundred and ten students earned bachelor's degrees. While a hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and ten students earned master's degrees in education. During the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two academic year, per government data. There were two thousand, two hundred and seventeen teacher preparation program providers with a total enrollment. Of six hundred thousand and eleven students. So when I hear comments at school board meetings about we can't seem to fill teacher positions. It, 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 it boggles my mind. But it also concerns me as to what these teachers are being taught to teach our students. This report that I came across. Is a study coming out of fifty colleges and universities, including, including a hundred and ten syllabi and fifty three course descriptions. That reveals a pervasiveness of radical left wing ideology in undergraduate and graduate education courses. Most core syllabi are from the last five to six years. Though sprinkled throughout the report are older syllabi meant to show how long some of these ideologies have been around in the colleges of education. For example, a Portland University, right here in Oregon. Portland University's elementary education program and courses. Includes lessons and materials that's the, the school's college of education features. Uh, guiding principles for future teachers that include becoming. Quote unquote, anti racist educators. Who can identify oppressive conditions, including micro and macro aggressions. Course content includes the study and application of critical race theory. Oppressor versus oppressed activities, white supremacy culture. Tenets of queer theory and teachers as activists. This is coming right out of. Our teacher colleges and I would challenge Jay Weeks, I'm glad you're still here. To be cognizant of what courses those teachers are that are applying for classes. We've had this discussion before about critical race theory and some of the, uh, some of the. Implied bias that's coming uh, into the classrooms. Well, it's coming into the classrooms because that's what they're being taught to teach. So, challenge. Anna, please find out if we're gonna get any, any money from the uh, from the kicker and. I think we need to, we need to be offering some encouragements to the teachers that we have here in the community that are doing a good job. And be aware of uh, the incoming classes, teachers that are maybe making an application to our school district.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, so that concludes public comments. Upcoming date seven point zero. Uh, no school staff development day, September twenty seven. Uh, it's a pancake as well, please remember that. Oh, yes, that's our pancake day. Um, school board meeting, October fourteenth, please note that is at four o'clock out in Pauline. Um, no school grades K three conferences, October twenty fourth. No school grades K through twelve conferences, October twenty fifth. Um, the O S B A annual convention is November seventh through the ninth and there's a link there for people to sign up for. Eight point O adjournment. Thank you, everybody.